There you go, can you hear me? Alright, there you do it tonight.
Adam, can you hear me?
I can hear you, can you hear me John?
Thank you, yes.
Hi Kenny, I'm here. I just have to step and go get something. I haven't turned my computer on yet, but I'm here.
Okay.
Okay everybody, let's take a look at who's unmuted. Terry, it looks like you have to unmute yourself.
Hello, goodbye.
Okay. We do not have any video from Tessa. Tess, you want to turn your video on?
It's getting muted, we're stuck on my little console right now.
Mr. Litch, would you want to call Tess and tell her she's not on video?
She's got audio.
Huh?
She has audio. She can hear us telling her that she needs to put on her video.
Oh okay, I didn't know, I didn't see the little mute thing up there.
Right, the absence of it means she has audio.
Alright, okay.
I thought she said she was here, but she was stepping away for a moment.
Yes, that's exactly what happened.
Oh okay, I'm sorry.
I'm back now, I just went to go get some water.
You have no video Tess.
No video.
Gregory, we are successfully live streaming this meeting to YouTube and live streaming to Spectrum 1023 now. He has worked out all the...
Okay, how do you bring it up on YouTube?
You merely go on to Newton Falls Television.
Okay. Alright, I'm gonna run downstairs for a second and see if my wife's aware of that.
It's also on Spectrum 1023, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, 1023.
Terry's upside down.
Oh yeah.
That's on your end Tess, he's okay for the rest of us.
Okay.
Hey Dave?
Yeah?
You saw my KFSUWI?
Yes.
They should be muted.
They actually, they have no audio device, they're only doing video.
Yeah? Same thing with, there was a phone.
Yeah, Galaxy Tab A8, same issue, whoops, there we go.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm keeping an eye on that.
Excellent, okay, thanks.
For some reason there are, well, I suppose what it is, is people are listening and they don't care to have an open mic, which is actually better for the flow of the meeting.
Terry's only upside down on my screen?
That's correct. Hey Mr. Chairman, according to the atomic clock located at NASA headquarters in Cape Canaveral, it is precisely 6pm.
Okay, I'm just trying to fix my camera here a second. Make sure that light is not glaring on everybody. Alright, that's... Alright, let's call this January 4th regular Newton Falls Council meeting to order. We'll start off the pledge and then a time of prayer. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
America, to the Republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Justice for all.
Hey precious Lord, we do come to you asking for your guidance and for your direction in the matters at hand. We pray dear Lord for your help that we would excel at what we do dear Lord and doing the business of those that represent our community and to glorify you, we do pray this in Jesus's name, amen.
Amen.
Okay, if Kathy could go ahead and call for the roll call.
Ray Meyer? Alberini?
Here.
Zimmerman?
Here.
Bariak?
Here.
Sputzer?
Here.
Okay, no special presentations?
No.
Okay, public comments? Individuals, we're limited to the agenda items on the first public comment, so give your name, your address, and then you have three minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I'm looking for someone who has signaled that they want to speak from the public right now. If you're on video, please raise your hand or something because we're having a hard time seeing. Mr. Crop has his hand signal up, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Alright, Mr. Crop, unmute yourself, give your name, address, and then you have three minutes.
Mr. Mayor, I should be unmuted, can everybody hear me okay?
Yeah.
Excellent, good evening, Brian Crop 2470 Elizabeth Street. I'm actually wanted to reference all the items on the agenda this evening. Is this, I'm assuming this is going to be the organizational meeting, that's the way this is designed. I wanted to answer that question, as far as all the motions that are included on tonight's agenda, I would love to know who originated all these motions. Sometimes, some meetings we have motions that have names attached to them, sometimes we don't. There's no, no one has any clue where these things come from, where they originated from, and that would be really helpful, very beneficial I think to the people to know who's originating this legislation, even motions, resolutions, ordinances, that kind of stuff. There's no kind of information whatsoever that tells that. So if someone could speak up on to who, where the motions came from, that would be very beneficial. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Chairman, at this time I'm looking for that blue hand signal. And I am not seeing that, if you don't know how to work your hand signal, wave your hand on the camera. Mr. Chairman, I see nothing further in public comments.
Okay, if that's, if that's it, we're going to move on to reports and we'll start off with council, we can start off with Councilman at Large Alberini.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman, I had multiple meetings the last couple weeks, several meetings of the Fire Board, etc. I won't go into detail until the next meeting on the 19th to save time, so that'll be it from here.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Zimmerman, if you have anything to report for the Ward 1?
Yes sir, I got a little bit to say tonight. I was with Terry, I was at the Fire Board meeting also. One meeting over two days, I was at both of those. Again, if I need to bring this up, I would talk about a possibility of the firemen needing new uniforms and a new bathroom, the bathroom remodeled at Station Number 1. This is the bathroom at Station Number 1. I spoke with the city manager on kind of what we can be doing to get that bathroom in acceptable conditions. I've been out working with the zoning, with Mark Stempert with zoning, a couple complaints over on Wethel Street and Park Avenue. This past week I was off from work, so I had the chance to tour all the water facilities here in town. I went through the wastewater, the drinking water, and the distribution side and met all the superintendents as well as the crews. Speaking with Mike Novotny, he wanted me to reiterate a little bit ago with a fail, he passed around a letter attached where it was advising and asking people to please not flush. Flush will wipe down the toilet because they get caught. You know, as flushful as they say, they get caught up in his pumps and they chew up his pumps. And he also wanted me to pass on that he's been seeing a lot of oil and grease from people jumping down the drains. So he wanted me to ask that people try not to dump as much grease down their drains. On New Year's Day, I received a video from, from a citizen here in town about some sewage that was overflowing onto Medley Avenue. I drove out there myself, took some pictures, and I forwarded the video and pictures on to the city manager. On January 2nd, when I was out walking in the morning on this field down here off West Broad Street and 9th Street, there were some hunters setting up some goose decoys in a field. I noticed that they were hunting within a hundred feet of the road. So I had a chance, I called a game warden, asked for specifics on the laws that might apply here. And I was able to address citizens' concerns, as soon as they started shooting, about four people keep running out of the houses, seeing what was going on. And I was able to explain to everyone that had a question there real quick that they were on private land, that they were on private lands, that there was no restriction to them being that close to the road as long as they weren't shooting over the road. So I was able to address that as it was happening. And that's about all I have.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Bariak, do you have anything for Ward 2?
Yes. I too was aware of the Medley Street sewage coming up out of the manhole. I tried to get a hold of the city manager all day, but he wouldn't return my calls. He said he'd call me tomorrow, which was the day after the holiday. He did call me the next day and I'll defer what I've been assured the problem has been corrected. I'll have questions for him when questioned by the city manager. Also about, I would like to know from the chair, when could I correct the agenda as far as what's on tonight's agenda?
What's printed? Yeah, once we get to changes to agenda, we will cover it then, okay? Alright. Right after, right after the reports. Okay. Do you have anything else, Mr. Bariak?
No, I'll defer to, I'll defer to the law director and the city manager, thank you.
Okay. Ms. Sputzer, do you have anything for the third ward?
Yes, I do. I'd like to start out by wishing everyone a Happy New Year. And I'd like to offer my condolences to you Mayor on the loss of your father.
As an ultimate.
But I would like to begin with a couple issues that I have also about tonight's agenda. On Wednesday at 9:06am, I submitted a request for a motion to be on the agenda about resuming in-person meetings. And also on Wednesday at 10:18am, I submitted an email to Kathy and the law director, the city manager, and I sent it through all of council too. I want to limit the spending of the city manager to $1,000 a week and anything over $1,000, I would like him to come to city council so that we are more aware of what's going on. The reason I made that motion is because after having gone through a lot of those numbers very diligently, I found some things that I found troubling. And today, today I just received an email that I've been requesting for probably a good five or six days. I wanted the city manager's report from the December 21st meeting. And it took me, it took me two formal requests and then it showed up sometime today. And in that, I saw that the law director did write an opinion to Mr. Bariak about how the city manager gave the employees an extra day off with pay for Christmas Eve.
Mr. Mayor, can I call a point of order here, out of due respect to Tessa?
It's my turn to talk, Mr. Alberini, you had your turn. It is my turn to talk, you can wait till I am done.
Mr. Mayor, there's a point, there's a point of order, if there's a second, we can address it. What is the point of order? What is the point of order?
Mr. Mayor, we're supposed to be talking about reports, she can go into this later on at the meeting.
I will continue with my report. I am going to continue with my report.
That's not a report.
On Wednesday at 1:01, I sent another email concerning a housekeeping issue and I've not received any information. I wanted clarification on a discrepancy that I found between the charter and the codified ordinances. And this deals with how this, that the special meeting or emergency meeting got set up and I think I would like, I deserve an answer. You know, we have a discrepancy between the city charter and the codified ordinances. One of them says that it takes 72 hours to do a special meeting, the other says 24 hours. I've not received any information back from anybody, I'm looking for answers. And one more thing I would like to address, during, during that emergency... And one more thing I would like to address, during, during that emergency meeting-
Mr. Mayor, I gotta call point of order again. This is reports.
Well, this, this is reports to have to do with her ward is the way I'm looking at it, I mean.
They do, they are reports that deal with the way I'm able to do my job for my ward. During that, during that-
Mayor, for just a second. Mr. Mayor, uh, it's accurate. The reports are to report back from your committees, your council, and constituents. You have an opportunity, that some of the questions she has are directed to the City Manager, some are directed to me. She has her opportunity after the City Manager's report and my report to ask those direct questions, and hey, if they want to talk about anything they want, that's the end of comments. She'll talk about anything she wants at the end of comment. This time is a report section of a business meeting.
Yeah, and, and she's reporting the, the things that she has for her ward, so I'm giving her the opportunity to do so.
It's for reports.
Continue on, Ms. Sputzer.
Okay.
I'm sorry, but I make a motion to overrule the Chair.
I'll second that.
You don't have, that's nice, but you don't have the floor right now. Continue on and finish. When it's your turn to talk, you can do so.
Mr. Mayor, I'm, I'm interrupting again, but there is a motion and a second to overrule. Uh, that, you have to do a rule.
Uh, I'm sorry, but we need to follow Roberts' Rules of Order. There's a time and a place for Tessa to bring up these points, and during her points is not the time.
Well, do you know what? If, if individuals that she is talking to in her ward have issue with these points, then they're part of her report. I mean, they-
And I agree with that, but I have not heard that, Mr. Mayor. I'm sorry.
But I'm saying, it's gone up to individuals, none of us to, to pick or choose, what, you know, I don't pick or choose yourself for the first ward or second ward. I mean, she's about done with what she's talking about, and then the, uh, Law Director can address it when it's his time, and the City Manager can address, but, so let her finish, and then we'll go to, uh, Ms. Bray Meyer.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, yeah, those were the three big things, though. The items that I submitted to the agenda that are not on the agenda, and the housekeeping issue dealing with the, uh, discrepancy with our documents. I can finish with that, and I'll, I'll hold my questions for the City Manager and Law Director when they give their reports.
Okay.
Thank you.
Uh, Ms. Bray Meyer, do you have anything for the fourth ward?
No, I don't. We've had no meetings.
Okay, thank you. Um, is Ms. Musson available for the, uh, financial?
Uh, she is not, Mr. Chairman. They, because that last meeting happened on December 30th, she is, uh, just barely able to get the books closed. They are over at the office with staff, uh, and trying to close out the books right now.
Okay, thank you. Um, Mr. Fritz, um, are you available?
I am, sir. I am.
Yes. Yes. Mr., uh, Mr. Fritz, I'd like to know-
Well, before, before questions, I have a report.
Oh, you want to report?
Yes, sir, please.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Fritz.
Uh, I'm gonna, I'm, I'm gonna start at a, at a spot that hopefully will make sense as we go through this. Uh, what I'm trying to get to is, I believe we'll be answering all Ms. Sputzer's questions and the Mayor's question from the emergency meeting last Wednesday. Uh, the question that was in the minutes from meeting last Wednesday, well, let me back up. The motions that were presented are not, the ones were taken off is because they're either not legal or not properly presented. While I understand you may want to put something on at, you know, nine o'clock Wednesday morning, that purpose of that being a deadline is so that I can review, make sure there's legalities to them, make sure there's no, that it crosses over, doesn't make sense, or violates some other part of the Charter. And I'll be specific with the motions, uh, that were presented. When the meeting, the emergency meeting, Mr. Mayor, you asked for this issue about sponsoring legislation. So I, I, I'm gonna, it's pretty clear, the only place in our Charter or in administrative rules where we talk about the word sponsoring is it says the person who sponsors the ordinance is the first one to speak on it. That's under Section 123.03, Section I. That says that normally the council member sponsoring a particular piece of legislation will be afforded the first opportunity to discuss it. There's nothing else in any of the rules, Roberts' Rules or any rules, that list how we handle sponsorship. Um, before Mr. Lynch came aboard, there was occasion, there was sponsorship where one individual councilperson asked for something specific, presented it to me, uh, I did the research, it came back. I will use an example, if Mr. Alberini would be okay with the fact, there was an issue regarding drones about two years ago. Um, he said, "We have an issue with drones," and he asked me to do research, find out what we can and cannot do. So that's the process as Law Director, I'm gonna be making sure things are legal and in compliance. So I went, did the research, I showed him a copy of what I expected the ordinance to be, and then on the following meeting, which went, two weeks later, he presented it, I believe he was listed as sponsor. What Mr. Lynch has been doing, which is not wrong, and he does a different method, is he's using, well, kind of what they do at the State House, or when they do legislation, uh, at, at Congress. They list sponsors and people that are actively want to show that they are, uh, connected to this. Uh, I don't know on all the, all the ones we have, how he finds out who the sponsors are. I know he's in communication with everybody regularly, and he lists the sponsors. I've never had anything to do with who's on as a sponsor, if he wasn't as a sponsor. Okay? Now, one of the things that people complained about is that Mr. Lynch is presenting things. Um, and, and I believe the direct question for Mr. Bariak is, what gives him the right? Well, if you go to Section 3 of our Charter, it lists the form of our government. It says it is a mayor-dash-council-dash-manager plan. The last sentence is, "The council shall appoint a manager who shall be the chief administrative officer of the municipality." That gives him the right to present these things. It's his job. Furthermore, under the legislative rules of this council, there's a Section 21.02, it lists the City Manager's duties. He makes recommendations to council concerning the affairs of the city, and he has a staff of council. Staff is the City Manager, the City Clerk, the Director of Law, and the Director of Finance. We constitute the council staff. The council staff, he's the executive officer of that staff according to that section, and it says, "The City Manager, with the help of the council staff, the mayor and council, shall prepare the agenda for each regular and special council meeting, together with necessary documentation." That is what his job is, to put the stuff together. Finance Director brings her things forward, goes on the agenda. We, council does not need to say, "I want the budget on the agenda." For example, this evening, we have, uh, one of our citizens, we're requesting, "How did all these things get on the agenda? The motion to schedule the meeting?" Look, that is what this council staff's supposed to do. We administrate so that council can review what we're doing, make decisions, and pass legislation. So the matters of appointing council vice president, that's specified in Charter and the administrative rules of what we're supposed to do, so we do it. That's the system, how it's supposed to work. Let me go through, since Ms. Sputzer brought it up. She brought forth some motions.
Well, while we're still on that, before we go forth, we're, we're kind of splitting hairs here, I'd have to say, because I, I, I remember when, um, um, Mr. Lynch had, had come on and we had an issue years ago with the golf carts, and I remember somebody asking about that, and Mr. Lynch is saying, "Well, I can only enforce what's already there because I'm, uh, not a legislator." He doesn't. And, um, you know, and that's what I'm saying, an administrator is no different than Ms. King, or, or yourself, or, or whatever else, that, that an administrator doesn't, uh, schedule when the meeting is, an administrator doesn't say, "Well, I want to sponsor this legislation." Um, there's one thing, like you said, to put together, but the individuals that sponsor and decide the meeting are the actual legislators. Am I correct on that, or?
Uh, no. I respectfully disagree. The council does not take care of the day-to-day operations of the city. That's the administration's duty.
Yes, I, I realize that, but they are the ones that sponsor the business that's being taken place.
That's not correct.
I mean, if, well, I mean, why is, I mean, based on, why? Because I'm just looking at the fact of you get Mr. Zimmerman, or Mr. Bariak, or Mr. Ms. Sputzer, if, if the administrators are going to just sponsor everything, then what's the sense of having five council people?
The, I didn't say they, they sponsor everything, but they, they do what we're supposed to do, such as making sure that the budget's presented by the 15th of November, the things that are on here today, appoint a council vice, if yours, if your staff doesn't do it, Mr. Mayor, it doesn't get done. Now, as I suggested, there's additional legislation, like I, my example with Mr. Alberini. There's something a council member wants to do, I prepare it, and we put it on the agenda. I'm not sponsoring it.
Well, I, I know, and, and that's why, when I, when I had contacted you before and you put it on, and it was through me, I'm just, you know, to prove clarity, it didn't say Joe Fritz, it said Mayor Klein.
A, and I would suggest, if this sponsorship is, is such a concern to everyone, uh, make a rule, uh, council can make a rule. No, no, sir, no, Mr. Bariak, the only word, the only word-
It's on the agenda, sir.
And what does it say, sir?
It says, "Motion to schedule all special and emergency meetings will be sent by email to the City Clerk and timestamp, and then sent to council as mayor as confirmation." So we don't get any confusion, and we don't have any, uh, he said, she said, we have documented proof who got, who, who sponsored it first.
Mr. Bariak, all due respect, the conversation right now is not about that.
Oh, I understand, I'm sorry.
It's on sponsorship. So I'm talking about sponsorship now. I think that if the council by a, a four vote, by a supermajority, can change the rule and specify either no sponsors, all sponsors, or let the City Manager decide sponsors. Any rule you want, but right now, there's no rule, so nobody's doing anything wrong by putting them on or taking, you know. But the City Manager's job is presenting legislation. It's a part of his job, and it's your job to say no if you don't like it.
Mr. Fritz, I would like me to address my two specific motions that I submitted.
Mr. Mayor, can I address those?
Yeah, yes.
Thank you, sir. Uh, the first one I'm gonna talk about is the motion to resume in-person meetings. Uh, it's already been decided, and under Roberts' Rules, we can't repeat motions over and over again. The motion would have to be a different motion. The motion was placed that we were supposed to have Zoom till February, and then I believe either two meetings ago or three meetings ago, the mayor asked for it to be done in person again, and it was never seconded. The Roberts' Rules tells you, you can't just keep bringing the same motion forward over and over and over again, hoping at some point it's gonna be passed. So during this session, which would last technically until January, uh, of next year, uh, unless there's a different form to the motion saying more specifics or something, it, it's, it's already been decided, so it doesn't go on. You have one saying that the motion to limit spending ability of City Manager to $1,000 a week, well, that violates our Charter. You can't, you don't, you can't make a rule that violates the Charter. The mayor-
Tell me how.
The City Man, you cre, you create a budget, and contracts are take, contracts and expenditures are placed through the City Manager and day-to-day administration. So as long as he doesn't go over the budget as created beginning of the year, that's his administrative duty.
Okay, now we have a problem. I was not in that budget meeting. Remember, I was kept out of my seat for over a month. I had nothing to do with passing that budget.
And anybody that comes in middle of the year is that same situation. That doesn't change anything, ma'am. It's there, the budget's there, uh, this is the budget that a council for the city has passed, and that's how it goes forward. You're violating the Charter by restricting the City Manager to $1,000. There was another couple of motions on here, I think Mr. Bariak put on, they were removed for different reasons. Now, some of these can be redone, and some of these can be refitted. Um, I will address Mr. Bariak's rule that he just talked about a few minutes ago. He wants to make sure that we have all special meetings, emergency meetings sent by email to the City Clerk and timestamp. While we're sending them by email, we aren't timestamping, we only timestamp hard copies, so that doesn't make any sense to me. I don't know how we're gonna set up an emergency meeting if there's a real emergency, such as our train derailment of 15 years ago or so, where we don't have electrical, we don't have train communication. Now you're making, unable for us to do set up a meeting. So in an effort, I've said this dozens of times, in an effort to fix a problem, you have unintended consequences that make more problems. There's a system in place to schedule meetings. I don't see it's ever been violated, everything was put in place, I don't understand what you want done.
Well, how about you addressing the housekeeping issue? Which version is correct? Does special meeting take 72 hours, or does it take 24 hours?
The Charter rules.
Charter rules, so it's 72 hours?
Correct. You, the, for example, the, your effort to restrict the City Manager $1,000 a week, you can put it in ordinance form, but it'll violate the Charter, so the Charter Rule state remains in effect. You can write all the ordinance as you want, but you have to change the Charter by going back to the people and vote to change the Charter. Council can't change Charter. They can only create legislation.
Okay, okay, wait, stop, stop, stop. You just said it takes 72 hours-
I did not. I said the Charter rules. I don't have the Charter in front of me.
The Charter says it takes 72 hours for a special meeting.
Okay.
On November 16th, you held a meeting, or council did, held a meeting and said, "Oh, by the way, we're having a special meeting on the 18th." That was 48 hours. So... There's a mess that needs cleaned up. You held a, a city council meeting on November 16th and said, "By the way, on November 18th, we're having a special meeting for the budget." That's 48 hours, Mr. Fritz, not 72.
Okay.
Do you have an address, please, sir?
I'd, yeah. Mr. Le, uh, Mr. Zimmerman, you have your first.
Okay, I just happened to have, I printed up before this meeting, the section of the Charter that has to do with special meetings and emergency meetings. So I will read them right now. Section 7, Special Meetings. The mayor, vice president of council, or any two members of council may call special meetings. There shall be given at least 72 hours' notice in writing of such special meeting, served personally on each member of council or at his usual place of residence. The, the, uh, specific purpose stated by the notification can only be considered at such meeting. It said there are at least 72 hours for emergency meetings. Emergency meetings may be called by the mayor, the same again, the vice president of council, or any two members of council. There shall be at least 10 hours' notice in writing of such emergency meetings, served personally on each member, and the very, just still the same after that. The words in there, "at least," are in both of these, not just that you have to have 72, and that you have to have 10 hours. Thank you.
I, I'd like to have, uh, the floor, Mayor, if I could.
Okay, hold on, Mr. Bariak, let me see if, uh, you had a first, let me see if Mr., uh, Alberini or-
Did I have a first?
Yeah. Yeah, um-
I didn't realize that, sir.
Um, Mr. Alberini or Ms. Bray Meyer, do you want it first before Mr. Bariak weighs in here?
Go ahead, Sandy.
No, I don't have anything.
Okay.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Um, I understand Ms. Sputzer's questions, I'm just trying to figure out, um, what the end game here is that we're trying to accomplish, because right now, we're splitting hairs over things that are really minor and wasting time.
I'll answer.
We need to start following, no, I'm sorry, one more, one more, we need to start following the Roberts' Rules of Orders of these meeting procedures, because right now, this is, this is becoming an abject mess, and I think it needs to get under control. We need to stay on topic and discuss the business at hand.
Okay, is that it, Mr. Alberini?
That's it, I'm, thank you for your time, thank you.
I have, I have, Mr. Fritz, why wasn't my motion put on?
Mr. Mayor, ask who you're recommending right now, sir.
Mr. Bariak has the floor.
Thank you.
Why, why wasn't my motion to have an independent investigation of who was responsible for the, uh, uh, defender, put, put on the agenda?
But, Mr. Bariak, the exclusive jurisdiction for those type of election matters, don't, don't rely on the city.
That's, excuse me, sir, that's not an election matter. It had a private citizen and a child involved. We don't, it isn't politics to bring people in, and another thing is, sir, one of our own council people was involved in it. Now, why is that illegal? And the other question is this, if my motion wasn't legal, why did you not come back to me and give me some kind of answer? Why? Why did you not, sir? Why, so I could dress it up, or so I could have researched it? Why did you not? You are- You are, that is your job. Why did you not do that, sir?
Are you done, sir?
You told, didn't tell me it wasn't gonna be on the agenda, you didn't do your job.
I take offense to that, I did my job. It came, don't, don't interrupt me, sir, don't interrupt me.
Oh, don't point at me either, Joe.
I'm telling you right now.
Don't point at me at either.
I, I, I am telling you right now.
What, tell me what you wanna say.
You put it on Wednesday. I believe it's not our jurisdiction, it's not a city issue that should be taken up city time, energy, and money. Now, having said that, that was Wednesday, this is Monday, it's on the meeting. If you have an issue and you want this to be redone, we will have it prepared for the next meeting if necessary. Everybody expects it to be done an hour ago, well, it isn't. My job is not to be here working weekends so that you can have a motion.
You're a full-time law director.
And?
Well, I'm saying, sir, you could have got back to me, because I would have asked for an opinion, written opinion, if I knew it wasn't gonna, why it wasn't. I have no knowledge that it wasn't gonna be on the agenda till Friday after three o'clock.
Okay.
All right? Now, that's, that's one point, sir, now, uh, I'll wait for a written opinion on that.
If you want a written opinion, sir. If you want a written opinion, if you want a written opinion why it's not on there, I'd like to have a vote of council, recommend me to do it.
Oh, no, I'm, I'm not asking for an outside opinion, sir, I'm asking for, what I have the right to do is ask for a written opinion, that is my right by you. You ought to give me a written opinion, sir.
We will have your written opinion.
Thank you. Now, let's go on to the other two subjects. I wanna know how we can correct the agenda tonight, because my motion, and it's in the minutes at first, was to give only the electric part of the bill. Now it's on, it's been tabled, and it says utilities. When it's in the minutes, Mrs. uh, uh, I put the motion on to only give the utility, I mean, the electric, discount to the electric, not the utilities.
If I can be heard on that, I can clear that up.
Yes.
I don't wanna give up my time now.
Okay, I, no, we got.
Go ahead and be.
I promise.
The other thing is, I would like this council to know, and especially Mr. Albertini, I was the alternate on the fire board, and Mr. Fritz, why, what, what is gonna be done? Because Mr. Albertini has been not the representative, if any action has been taken by the fire board, has it been legal?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, can I respond to that with permission for?
No, how many, how many addresses have you had, Chair?
None, not as many as you have, John.
Just, just the one, yeah, yeah, go ahead, Mr. Mayor.
I wanna finish my.
Uh, Mr. Barak made a point.
I have the floor, Terry.
Mr. Mr. Barak made a point.
Can you tell me who's recognized right now?
At the moment, Mr. Barak is, and then Mr. Albertini's gonna be able to, um, address that. Mr. Barak.
I couldn't hear you, sir, what is that, Mr. Klein?
You, you have the floor, and then Mr. Albertini can have, follow up with his second address.
All right. I was the alternate on the fire board. What are we going to do about that, Mr. Fritz, now?
Okay, before, before Mr. Fritz goes, let Mr. Albertini go, then Mr. Fritz.
I have two questions about the electric, how are we gonna clean that up? How are we, 'cause I made the motion, and I'll let the city, I'll defer to the city manager for his explanation of that, because I do not want all utilities, we're in bad shape for the sewer anyhow, I missed specifically stated electric on my motion, and then it got convoluted with the transfer of the minutes or something, I don't know, I'm not the clerk.
Okay, hold on a second. Um, Mr. Albertini, follow up on that, and then, Mr. Fritz, you're gonna speak on the, uh, um, the board, and then, Mr. uh, city manager, you could talk in utilities, but Mr. Albertini, use your second address.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, I ju- I wanna stay on topic here, I don't want this, uh, the meeting to get out of control as it has been, but I will respond to that. Mr. Barak made it known to council back in September that he wouldn't be attending any of the committee meetings.
No, sir.
He made that.
No, sir.
Don't interrupt me, sir, you made a point.
The public utilities.
Don't, don't interrupt me, so Kenny, that's what, that's where it's at.
Don't lie, Terry, that's not true.
Just, just to finish.
That's not true.
I'm done, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
All right, Mr. Fritz, weigh in on the, um, um, the question here about the, uh, boards.
Well, I'm not sure what they voted on, I was not at any of those meetings, I'm not sure what the votes were, so I don't have an opinion. Um, we have a representative that's there, I'm not sure exactly, it's the fire board's issue, not ours.
Okay. All right, and then, uh, Mr. City Manager, um, if you wanna weigh in about the, uh, issue with the utilities and the, uh, um, motion made.
Sure, uh, all I was gonna say is that on January fourteenth, when that is scheduled, I will address the question of the discount related to electric as a separate issue per your original motion, Councilman, I assure you, I will do that on that date.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Well, we need to clean up the minutes then a little bit.
Excuse me, can I have the floor?
You, you sure, Ms. King.
I believe when the motion was made to change the agenda, it specified electric utility, but I believe in the context of the body, when the motion was made at the end of the meeting, it did not specify electric.
Okay. Yeah, I, I think maybe we took the, the, uh, notes or whatever weren't exactly accurate, so we'll have to, uh, soon as the reports are done here, we'll have to go ahead and, um, um, straighten that around then.
Okay, is the city manager, uh, gonna have his time?
Yeah, he will in a moment, I'm going to, uh, just put something real quick on here. Um, I didn't intend on having anything of my own, but I just wanted to kinda piggyback in on the conversation we had here with, uh, the, um, stuff on the agenda. I mean, my, my comment and my thought on this is that at times, maybe there's something wrong with something that's sponsored, but I, I believe that it's a slippery slope to decide what's not put on the agenda, and for us not to get back to the council person that made it, to, you know, just to decide, you know, if it's me, and I make, uh, I sponsor something for the next meeting, for us to build a dome stadium on Center Street, and then it's not on there, and I, I'm never told anything, I don't think that that's the, uh, appropriate way to handle business, I think the appropriate way is to get back with me and say, well, I can't because of this, or this was wrong. Um, I don't think I'm being, um, I don't know, too demanding to, to mention that, because I think that what we do is, when we come up with things that we protect from what could take place down, down the road, and I, I think it's just wrong to, uh, kinda pick or choose what we're, what we don't respond to or whatever, and it's, um, all I have. Um, Mr. City Manager, do you have anything to report?
Yes, I, I will tread lightly into these roiling waters. Speaking of roiling waters, the, uh, Medley Avenue sewer matter was first called to my attention on, um, New Year's Eve, and, uh, I was able to send a police officer, uh, his name is Igor Olafur, and he went out there with a flashlight and did his due diligence. Um, there was a manhole cover on Medley in which some septic materials bubbled up from that manhole cover, um, and, uh, I appreciate the work of Officer Olafur. In addition to that, I did wait until Saturday to call you, John, 'cause I had no information, and it was New Year's Eve. On Saturday, uh, excuse me, it was New Year's, on Saturday, I called you, and it turned out it was a sealed system, and what happened was, uh, because it's a sealed system, it's pressurized under Medley Avenue, and the one manhole cover, the one in front of that particular residence in the middle of Medley, uh, had not been sealed, so all the pressure from that sealed septic system built up, and it bubbled out from that system, uh, on Medley. Uh, the contractor that's working on Medley is not done yet, they haven't been paid all of their funds, the final inspection hasn't taken place, but we've identified the problem to make sure it doesn't happen again, it will take a few days to get the proper materials to seal up that manhole cover, uh, and when I say sealed, I mean it's an airtight system, and so what happens is when we have an overflow during a heavy rain of, um, stormwater that, that gets through cross connections into the sanitary system, it normally won't bubble up there if the system is kept sealed that way, but because that manhole cover was not sealed, um, we had that problem, so, uh, we have not made all the payments to the contractor, we won't until it's right. I spoke with the engineering firm also, uh, and that project won't be paid off until sometime in the spring. In the meantime, we will resolve that issue as quickly as we can with the sealing of the manhole cover, uh, and otherwise, the engineers tell me the Medley project is going as normally planned, with the exception of this one particular issue. Um, and in fact, the mayor's the one that contacted me originally, actually, Mayor, I think it was New Year's Eve when you contacted me originally, uh, and, um, so we got the matter resolved, and, uh, are moving forward, and, uh, I mentioned this during the beginning of the meeting, the only other thing I wanted to report is that, uh, this meeting and all meetings going forward, even though they're by Zoom, uh, we worked very hard and diligently to solve the technology so that we can have a Zoom meeting, uh, live streamed, and that's happening tonight. Right now, as you talk, it's live streaming on YouTube and live streaming on Spectrum, channel one zero two three, and, Mr. Chairman, that completes my report.
I have questions for the city manager.
Okay, Mr. Barak, you have the floor.
You weren't here, Mr. Lynch, and I saw some engineering being done out in the, out by folk and associates for the township for the Scott Street Sewer Project. Are, are we paying for that?
No.
The county, we're using the county's plans?
Yes.
The county's plans, I haven't seen the plans yet, is there any anticipation of this running out there to Luxair?
I don't believe so.
Okay, uh, the Medley Street, we'll go to, back to the Medley Street.
Sure.
Is there any, do you think there may be a problem that our pumps can't handle that at the station?
Not at all.
All right.
Okay.
Uh, and how, how much have the, how much has, has been paid to the, uh, company that did this?
Uh, I'm uncertain, but I believe that two out of the five scheduled payments have been paid, so sixty.
Twenty-five thousand dollars was each payment, twenty-five thousand, sir?
I, I don't remember the exact amount, but about forty percent of the total has been paid, and the other sixty percent is being held back.
Now, I wanna ask you another question. Back in September, I called you and told you I was very, very busy, I would not be, I asked not to be, uh, at the, at Utility Review Board for, to at least October first, because of my schedule. I asked for nothing else, no other, not to be involved in anything else except, and you said, sure, Mr. Barak. Now, we've had a statement made from the floor by Mr. Albertini that I don't, I wasn't on any committees. Well, you know what I mean, that, now, I, I don't know.
This is my report, I'm, what's the question?
I mean, the question is, did I not call you and just ask to be not available for the public work, uh, Utility Review Board, sir?
Uh, you did call and said, said that your availability was very, very limited.
Okay. The other, the other thing is, how do we know, Mr. Lynch? I, I emailed in a request for a meeting, wasn't an hour later that I got a call back and said, well, Mrs. Braymire and Mr. Albertini had already put in. Well, why didn't you tell me then that they had already put in and saved me the time of putting it in then? I mean, or tell me, well, don't bother, John, it's already been put in. You didn't not say anything about, and that's why there's pieces of legislation on there tonight, sir. We'll get to that when we go. Wanna, do I still have the floor to ask him one more question, Mr.?
No, I, I was, the time's up, I was waiting to see if he was gonna respond before I would see if somebody else.
Well, he won't respond. All right, will you?
I don't know what the question is.
The question is, how, sir? Why did you not tell me that Mrs. Braymire and Mr. Albertini had already put in? Why did you not tell me that? And tell me, you said, oh, Mrs. Braymire called in, and I said, Mrs. Braymire and, and Mr. Albertini, I said, oh, and when I called, when, when I called a day or two later, or after.
Yeah, I didn't have a chance to talk to the city clerk to see who had called when at that time.
Well, what are you doing, Mr. Lynch, if you don't have time to find out what's going on?
I didn't say I didn't have time, I said, at, the, the, the relationship with the city clerk was such that I did not check with her, I had not checked.
I'm sorry, sir, I, I, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to be abusive, I'm just saying, it was, it was more than, it was more than an hour, it was more than that, it was the next day, too, we went through this. I'm sorry.
Yeah, they, they contacted us, I believe, on, uh, Tuesday morning.
All right, and one other thing, I wanna ask the city manager.
Okay, let me, let me.
No more time's up, may I please have a, a one more question, Mr. Klein?
Yeah, go ahead, finish.
Am I getting it, am I getting it, uh, uh, that I'm allowed to go under anybody else's ward, and if I see problems, I'm allowed to point them out, is that, will that be okay? Is that, is that okay, sir, by you, Mr. Lynch?
You can point out anything you want to.
Well, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, does, does anybody else have an address for the, uh, city manager?
I do.
Sir, you have the floor.
Thank you. Um, at this point, I've received two city manager reports, and nowhere, nowhere on either one do I see anything that relates to the automobile that the city provides for him. According to section six of his contract, it says that the employee may use the vehicle for personal, for personal business, but the employee may, will maintain records of such personal use. And I would like to, I would like council to receive reports from the city manager concerning the automobile. That's all.
Okay. Um, does anybody else want an address to the, uh, city manager? Does anybody else want an address for the city manager? If not, we're gonna, uh, move forward, all right? We're gonna move forward to, uh, changes to the agenda.
Yes. I'd like to put, I'd like to put my motion on, that we have an independent investigation into who was responsible for the defender.
Okay, you're making a motion to put this on, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, Ms. Spleitzer, um, discussion.
Um, I will be voting no, um, this is a civil matter, has nothing to do with council, has nothing to do with the village, simple as that.
Okay, um, any other, uh, discussion?
I would withdraw this information, this request, if Mrs. Braymire, who, uh, was involved in it, would tell me who, who, who sponsored it, that's all, she was involved in it, we have public officials here that are getting into, this is not, you're not a fair target, sir, and it, when you're not an elected official, you're not a public target. To bring private citizens in here and children is a disgrace, is a disgrace, and, well, am I still talking?
Yeah.
I'm asking to be recognized.
Okay, wait, wait till Mr. Barak is done, done, but I will.
And I think that to put a, to put to, put to bed all the rumor and innuendo that's going around town, and to clear our good names, all, everyone on this council and staff, that we should do it.
Okay, do you have anything else, Mr. Barak?
No.
Okay, uh, Mr. Lynch, did you want the floor?
No, I have nothing further.
Okay, any other, any other, uh, comments or discussion on this before we vote?
Yes, I would, Mayor.
Ms. Braymire, you have the Ms. Braymire, you have the floor.
There's been a lot of questions about the Defender. And I'm going to tell you what my part in it was, Mr. Bariak. I wrote that letter and I signed my name to it. And it is the truth, every word of it. I don't know why everybody's so upset about the Defender. That was something that woman did. It is not a lie. It is not a lie. Thank you.
I have a second address.
Hold on a second. Mr. Zimmerman and Ms. Blitzer haven't addressed yet. Mr. Zimmerman, if you want, you're first.
Am I allowed to ask just a brief question of Mr. Fritz on this matter?
Yeah, go ahead, you have the floor.
Mr. Fritz, can you just please explain one more time your opinion on whether this is a town matter or a civil matter and how that should be looked at, sir? Thank you.
First of all, I've only seen it once. I don't know all the details, what's in there. I looked at it, realized where it was, and was done with it. But it is either an election issue. If it's an election issue, there's no jurisdiction we have any right to investigate. It's exclusively through the state of Ohio. If there is some sort of slander or libel, it's a civil matter, not criminal. So I'm unsure whether there should be expenditures of any city funds in order to pursue this matter. And my initial reaction is, it's a civil issue between non, the city's not a party to this. And despite what rumors and innuendo might be floating around out there, it's not city business. And there should be expenditures of money. And if it is an issue of some sort of election fraud or misrepresentation, we have no jurisdiction, it's exclusively with the state of Ohio. So that's why I had it pulled. Now I have to write a written opinion on it.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, Ms. Blitzer, do you want an address before we go ahead and give Mr. Bariak a second?
Yes, of course I do. I happen to have plenty of evidence that directly points to the city manager being involved in this. I know for a fact that the city manager went to the school and went through my personnel file. Nobody else has ever done that. The information that came out of my personnel file from the school is the information that was used to create Defender Number One. I know where the rest of the information came from for Defender Number Two, and involves another city official as well. City officials are involved, Mr. Fritz. City officials are involved.
Okay, is that all you have, Ms. Blitzer?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Bariak, did you want a second?
Yes.
Okay, you have the floor.
I don't look at it as a civil matter. I look at it as, let's get to the bottom of it and clear our good names of our city officials. Which, from my understanding, were involved. I don't know if that's true. I'm asking for an independent investigation. Surely, the people in this town have the right to know what their public officials are involved in. I can tell you right from the floor now, I wasn't involved in it. And I would like to be able to say, we ran an investigation. No one in this village has been involved in it. We don't resort down to that type of gutter character assassination. And I know one thing, I'm involved in a, I don't want to be involved myself in a lawsuit. I don't want to be involved in myself in a lawsuit. And also, I have not been kept up to date by anything, by Mr. Fritz, about anything that's gone on or has gone on about this matter. That's all I want to say, thank you.
Okay, anybody else?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, one final comment.
Okay, Mr. Alberini, you have the floor.
Thank you kind, sir. You know, I don't know nothing about this Defender. It's been, you know, I live in a ward where if it was male, I didn't see nothing. That's the God's truth, number one. Number two, and I will tell you this, you know, when you enter into the public arena, whether your record's good, bad, and different, your record becomes public. You become open season. As Mr. Bariak said, you know, our good names do get tarnished in the process of politics and elections and things like that. Being in politics, as we know by this meeting tonight, it's a rough and tumble sport, okay? Not everybody, not everything everybody says about us is true. If I lived by Facebook and listened to all the stuff that's on Facebook about myself personally, I would probably have to spend 100 years in the penitentiary for all the wrongdoings that people said I did that I didn't do. So I would say this, when you enter into that public arena, be prepared to take your licks and take your blows. I've seen Pastor Kenny, he's a mayor now, and I've seen people ask him to resign. A pastor of a church asking him to resign. I've seen my friend Lyle Waddell just totally insulted so many ways and foul names about him and caricatures of him sitting on a John and things like that. Horrible stuff. I've never seen such hateful, demonic filth spewed out of a certain group of people towards the elected officials here on council. And I'm sorry, Ms. Tessa, that something like that happened. It's happened to me in my political career. I have no control over it whatsoever. What people say about you, or me, or Kenny, or David, or John, or all of us as a group, you know, it's impossible control. The best thing I can do is raise my head high, hold my chest out, and just walk away from it and don't respond. So that's all, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. May I weigh in?
Yes.
The motion, as I understood it from Mr. Bariak, is a motion to have an independent investigation to find out who is responsible for the Defender. My question on behalf of the staff would be, who's an independent investigator? Who do they want? How are we going to pay for it? What budget does it come out of? What is the scope of the investigation? These are all the matters that would have to be cleared up before.
Okay, did you have anything else, sir, Mr. Fritz?
No, sir.
Okay, my own view on this, to be honest with you, is I was kind of thinking about it biblically, so everybody gets to hear it, a sermon, and we'll put my pastor hat on now. Yeah, I know, I'm glad that you like that. Scripture will tell you, on one hand, it'll tell you to judge. On the other hand, it'll tell you not to judge. And you wonder, how is that to be? And sometimes that you go in front and something is discussed, not to give somebody guilt, but as Mr. Bariak had said, I agree to clear your name. And I bring all this up, I'm sitting here listening to everybody. And if you look biblically what it's talking about, about judging, it's not in a critical manner. It's not to criticize, but it's to discern or to test something, such as Coke and Pepsi. If you're going to judge, you're discerning or testing, is it Coke or Pepsi? You're not being critical. And that's why I would be for putting it on your agenda just for the fact of, for the discussion purpose. All the questions that Mr. Fritz had asked, those are things that the councilmen would discuss. Or they would look at and they would say during discussion, is this ethical? Or is this like Mr. Alberini said, all is fair in love and war? Is it that? But there's, but when you're judging a situation, you put it on the agenda. You have five individuals on council that look into things. I mean, I don't believe it's a correct thing to just say, "Well, this doesn't pertain," or "I don't think this is a good idea," or "I don't like this, so we're not going to at least give the council the opportunity to speak on it." And that's where I come across on this. And my issue is, I believe that when we have issues, that each person on council should at least have the opportunity to think for themselves. And that's all I have.
I'd like to move forward again, please.
Ms. Blitzer, you have your second.
I would like to note that at the end of the meeting on the 21st, two of my constituents from Ward Three brought this issue during their public comments at the end of our meeting. That would be Mr. Warner Lang and Mr. Bruce Moore. Two of my constituents in Ward Three want answers. They want to know, why did this stuff show up in their mailbox? And I'm also going to put in my personal feelings that since Ms. Braymire did participate willingly, that she needs to recuse herself from voting on anything related to the Defender. She participated.
Okay, is that all you have, Ms. Blitzer?
Yes, Mayor.
Ms. Braymire or Mr. Alberini, do you want a second before we move forward?
Yes, I do, sir.
Okay, Ms. Braymire, you have the floor.
One of the problems I have with the Defender, and I told you what I did, and I did not give that paper to the Defender, is that it's the truth. Are you, Ms. Blitzer, telling us it's all a lie? I don't think so, ma'am. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Alberini, did you want a second? Or Mr. Zimmerman?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I would just call to vote, please. That's all, let's move off this topic.
All right, let me see if Mr. Zimmerman wants the second, and then we'll vote. Mr. Zimmerman, did you have anything before we roll call?
No, sir, I'm good.
Okay, roll call.
Alberini?
Done.
Zimmerman?
No.
Bariak?
Yes.
Blitzer?
Yes.
Braymire?
No.
Epstein.
Okay, we needed four there, so it doesn't get added in. Okay. Was there anything else, changes to the agenda? Okay, if not, approval of the previous minutes, December 21st, regular meeting minutes, as well as December 30th, emergency meeting minutes. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes?
Um, wait, yeah, I'll make the motion.
Okay, Ms. Blitzer makes a motion. Do we have a second?
Mayor, make sure you separate those two. It's two separate votes. Just do December 21st and then the 30th, please.
All right, Ms. Blitzer, do we have a motion by Ms. Blitzer to approve of December 21st regular meeting minutes?
Oh, no, I need them amended. I think they need to be amended.
Mr. Chairman, you need the motion first.
Yeah, we have to get a first and a second, and then we'll have discussion.
I'm sorry, are you making a motion? I'll make the motion then. Now who's going to second it?
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay, discussion.
I have discussion.
Okay, Ms. Blitzer. Ms. Blitzer, you have the floor.
Thank you. One thing that has bothered me, and it has in the past with other meeting minutes, is that they always say that they were held in council chambers, and we're not in council chambers. You know, and I brought this to the floor sometime during the summer when we were still holding meetings. You know, 2020 was a mess. We started out 2020 by having meetings at the municipal building where the court is. And then we had a couple of meetings out on a football field. Then we started having meetings in a church. You know, and I just, I think we need to make sure that we are a little more tidy with, you know, how we are saying, because these meetings are being held by Zoom. So that's my first issue. And then one big issue I did find was on the the roll call to table Mr. Bariak's motion about the discount on the electric. The roll call says, "Motion failed four to one." I would believe that should say, "Motion passed four to one." Because the motion was to table the electric, you know, it says, it says, "Motion failed." That needs to be changed. And that's all I have.
Okay, any, I'd like to be recognized.
And Mr. Bariak?
On the 21st minutes, I'd like to go back, because we went through so many things. How, I want to make sure that the people know that I only asked for the electric. I know, in the original motion, I asked, and I'd like to have that, the original motion, whether if I misspoke. But I want to make sure that, how can we do that, Mr. Fritz? That we only go for the electric like was done back in March or April of last year.
All we're doing now is approving the minutes. If Ms. Blitzer wants to have it amended to say it was a Zoom-type meeting, she should make a motion, it should be seconded, and then you can amend it. If she wants to make it regarding the other matter, you go through it. It's not, you don't go back and clean up what was actually said. If it's something that was not said in the minutes, then you ask it to be amended, and you discuss it and fix the minutes. So you have an accurate depiction of what happened at the meeting.
Well, I'd like to make a motion, and that we amend to specify only the electric was to be given a, as my original motion was on the change the agenda. I understand, I hope, I don't, can I put that motion on the floor, sir?
I would like you to be specific, what page, what should be changed. You do it, and then...
I'm sorry, can I speak?
Yes.
Well, I'm not sure that that motion could be amended. If my minutes reflect what was specifically said, how do you amend what was said? I mean, all we're doing is voting on what was said. That motion could be amended at the next meeting when it's brought off the table.
Okay, yeah, here is the question. Yeah, here is the question, either myself or Mr. Bariak misspoke, because it might have been me, because I thought he wanted all utilities. I didn't realize he wanted only electric. We have down for the next meeting to look at the discount for all utilities, when all, the only he wishes for is electric. So is it better to go into the next meeting with it already squared away and straighten as electric? Or is it better to wait until the next meeting to address that?
Mr. Chairman, I might be recognized for a moment.
Yes.
A motion to approve the minutes. Merely whether or not the minutes reflect what was said at the meeting, not if what was said at the meeting was what you meant to say at the meeting. I've already indicated that we'll address the issue that Mr. Bariak raised in his original motion at the next meeting. The second issue with reference to chambers, the law director was asked this exact, exact question about five months ago, and he indicated that the term chambers is a generic term, meaning wherever city council is. So if you're in Mount Rushmore, if you're by Zoom, wherever you happen to be, that's what the chambers are. Therefore, both motions, while understood, the city clerk has accurately written down what people said. And that's all that a motion to approve minutes is. So we're kind of spinning our wheels about things that have nothing to do with a motion to approve minutes.
I have a second address.
Sure.
Originally, I was, if they will look back at it, that I was misquoted, too. Mr. Alberini and Mr. Waddell said in April 6th meeting, and that's on video, that they would pursue a 30% discount for the businesses and get back. I heard nothing since December. Now, I did sponsor that because I wanted the 30%, but they gave a sure that they would take a look at. How long does it take the finance committee and the finance director to look at something? As of December, I've never got any kind of a, I never got anything, and I put this on myself for the electric, for the people.
This has nothing to do with whether the minutes accurately state what happened. Please call the roll.
Well, then, sir.
Wait a minute.
We need to go ahead and go, we need verbatim minutes. We need verbatim minutes that way, because as you've said in the past, and Mrs. King has said in the past, or I don't know if it's Mrs. King, excuse me, I don't want to point fingers, that they are, or the law director, that's right, that they are not a word for word, they're just a generalization. And I would like this council down the road to consider verbatim minutes.
Mr. Mayor, um...
I am prepared, I am prepared to make my amendment.
I would respectfully call the roll, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, hold on for one second.
In the middle of the page where it says, "After a brief discussion, Bariak made a motion, seconded by Blitzer, to table this motion until the second meeting in January." Then there was a roll call. And it says that motion failed four to one. That means, that should... that should say motion passed four to one.
Mr. Chairman, just check with the clerk. She's right in front of me.
The motion.
On my part, it should say passed.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, well, let's, let's do this. Just make sure.
Need a motion though, or can I correct it as a typo?
You can correct it.
Just correct it, put line through, address it, whatever, that it's passed. Let's do a roll call for this to approve the minutes, and then the next meeting, we get into the January meeting, we will allow Mr. Bariak to, um, um, call to have the motion amended. Is that correct?
Yes.
All right, roll call on approving the December 21st minutes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Bariak?
Yes.
Sletzer?
Yes.
Bray Meyer?
Yes.
Albreney?
Yes.
Okay, uh, minutes approved. Um, motion to approve the December 30th emergency meeting minute.
Some move.
Mr. Albreney, do we have a second?
Seconded.
Zimmerman, um, any discussion on that? Okay, if no discussion.
One, one thing I'd like to say.
Okay.
Um, go, go ahead.
Mr. Bariak?
Look, there was no way that I would, in other words, punish the employees for something they had no hand in. But I would like to see, from now on, that we, we get this information to us a little quicker, and so we know what's going on and not be kept in the dark. Now, that may be out of topic right now, but there's been some discussion around town about why, you know, when everything's dumped on, you don't know what's going on, and how, I, I will tell you what, I will not be voting on anything anymore.
Okay.
Yeah, be not voting against on anything anymore. It's all funny, isn't it?
Anything else before we go ahead and, uh, call a roll on this? Okay, all right, roll call.
Bariak?
Yes.
Sletzer?
Yes.
Bray Meyer?
Yes.
Albreney?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Okay, minutes approved. Um, public hearings, none. Um, unfinished business, and this was the, um, motion, um, to give citizens the one-time discount, and this is tabled until the next meeting. So new business, um, Ms. King, if you want to read number one.
A motion to schedule this meeting in January for Tuesday, January 19th, 2020 at 6:00 PM.
Okay, before we make the motion or whatever, I contacted individuals. I'd like to see if we could, uh, and I'm not sure with Ms. King, I'd have to ask you. I don't know, uh, the dates. I know that Wednesday, Thursday, you have issue with something, if we have it a certain day, I remember from last year, but I'm looking not to have it on Tuesday, uh, because of a ball game, looking to have it either Wednesday or Thursday, and I don't know if, uh, if that messes Ms. King up, if it's Thursday, or?
No.
I would make, I would make a motion that we change it to, uh, since we're, we're broadcasting the basketball games, I would make a motion that we change it.
Change it to Thursday if you could.
What's that?
If you could change it to Thursday, change it to Thursday.
I would make a motion to change it to Thursday if no one else has any problem.
Okay, so Bariak made a motion to change it to Thursday, the, uh, what is that, the, um?
21st.
Monday 1st of January.
Okay, do we have a second?
I second.
Ms. Sletzer, is there any discussion on that at all?
Uh, yeah, Mr. Mayor, uh, the only thing I have was, uh, is a possibility, I may not make it back in time, because typically I'm out of town on Thursdays. But, you know, I'm all for a basketball game, so.
Okay. And the only reason I said.
Address, Mayor.
Uh, yeah, go ahead.
I would, oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I'm out of line.
Okay, um, does it, is there any other discussion? The only reason I said Thursday is because, um, not only are they broadcasting, but the city manager is part of the broadcast crew, and with a lot of the games being made up, they're making some up on Wednesdays and such, so Thursday is, is probably a good date. If it doesn't, if it doesn't hinder Ms. King in the minutes, that's what I would ask.
It wouldn't be a hindering of the minutes. The issue would be if there's any legislation that needs passed in order to get it read for its second meeting, it needs to be published in the paper a week before. That would, if you passed something at that Thursday, you would not be able to read it for a second reading at the following meeting.
Okay.
Mayor, am I allowed to have a second?
Uh, you, you know what, you never, you never had a first, I don't believe. I, I think all you.
I would, I would amend, yeah, look, if it's going to be a problem with the legislation, I understand your position, Mayor, about games being made up, but could we, maybe all of us agree on Wednesday?
Yeah, I mean, I'm okay with that. I mean, I, that's why I.
We're going to ask Mr. Fritz how to do that right now.
Mr. Chair, if I may be heard, there's a, there's a third alternative.
Okay.
Um, our city employees have the day off on Monday, Martin Luther King Day.
Yes.
Um, I usually work that day anyhow. We could, we're doing these meetings by Zoom. It's not like I have to maintain some kind of janitorial crew or something like that. You can do the meeting on Martin Luther King Day, and I'd be happy to accommodate it. That way, we meet the city clerk's seven-day requirement, we meet your requirements of being able to do the basketball on Tuesday, and, uh, nobody gets hurt.
I'm not sure I'm in town on that day. I already had plans. Sorry, it was a day off.
Well, she's got a day off, Mr. Lynch.
Mr. Fritz has substituted its clerk before, so if you really wanted to pull it off on the 18th, we could.
We have the newspaper for having meetings on that day before.
Okay.
Sir, I have a motion on the floor to, to make it Wednesday.
I thought it was Thursday.
I thought it was Thursday, too. Thursday, the 21st.
I thought that was the motion.
Can I have one more say?
Mrs. King.
I did get, I did get a message that the only day that they are not having games on is Wednesdays. So Thursday would be a basketball game somewhere.
Who, who, who did you get that from?
Uh, Tom Gregory, the guy that's doing the games.
Okay, I mean, I mean, he's, I'm not going to pick on Tom, but he's actually incorrect. I mean, the, uh, the athletic director is trying to fill spots we might be having on next Wednesday, but either way, um, you know, what works well with your, with, I mean, does it, um, what would it be to do like, uh, city manager said and have Mr. Fritz cover for Ms. King and just go back and have it on the Monday?
I, I'd like to have a day off, too.
Okay. All right, so do we want to just keep it with, we got Mr. Bari, well, here's the deal. Well, Mr. Bariak has a, uh, a motion on the floor. Is there any more discussion, what we want to do here, before we vote?
I, I'd like to have a second if I could.
I'd like to have my first, please.
Yeah, Ms. Ms.?
I'd like to have it on, uh, Martin Luther King Day and be done with it. Uh, you know, no disrespect to Martin Luther King, but, or their doings, but we have to do the council meeting. No defense to anybody with basketball, but we can't start having our meetings doing to the basketball schedule. That's it.
Oh, could I have a second?
Yes.
Wait, did I have a first shot?
No, Ms. Sletzer, you have the floor.
Okay, um, I'm good with Thursday, the 21st, because as we were told when, um, when I was in Akron at my attorney's office, that, um, the judge is going to be hearing Lyle Waddell's case on January 21st. So I was hoping that, you know, this, that will be all done and over with.
If I can have a second, I'll withdraw my motion, uh, and, and, could, did I second Mrs. Sletzer's, uh, sec, did I make motion for Thursday or what?
You did.
You did.
You did originally, uh, you want to withdraw the motion, is what you said?
I want to withdraw my motion to have it on Wednesday and go with Thursday. Originally had.
You made a motion for Thursday.
Yes, that, the original motion, yes, if I'm the one, yes.
Okay, so we're, we're set. The motion on the floor is for Thursday, the 21st. If there's no other discussion, we'll go ahead and vote. Correct, everyone?
Yeah.
Okay, um, roll call.
Sletzer?
Yes.
Bray Meyer?
No.
Albreney?
Abstain.
Zimmerman?
No.
Bariak?
Yes.
I have two yeses, two nos, and an abstention.
Okay, yes.
Really?
Yes, uh, Thursday, 21st passes.
I lost track of days, Kenny. What day is it?
Thursday, the 21st.
I'm not sure that's a tie, was it, Joe?
It was.
Where's the abstention go?
It, it, it's a tie, yep.
All right, so we're under number two. Um, Ms. King, if you want to read the, uh, motion for the vice president?
Motion to appoint a council vice president for 2021.
Make a motion that we appoint Sandra Bray Meyer as VP of Council for, let me finish, for 2021.
Okay, hold on for one second, Thursday. Um, you made a motion to, uh, do I?
Um, appoint Sandra Bray Meyer as council vice president for the year 2021.
Okay, do we have a second?
Seconded.
Okay, Albreney, Zimmerman, um, do, do we have any discussion on this?
Yes. Every, every year, we've been giving someone else a chance to be vice president of council. I supported a change last year and the year before. Uh, Mrs. Bray Meyer, wasn't, wasn't she last year the vice president of council?
Only since the.
Who was?
Only since, uh, Mr. Sevett resigned, so that would have been like August, September, maybe.
Thank you.
Okay, um, any other discussion? Okay. Yeah, if there's, if there's no other discussion, um, go ahead and call the roll if you could, Ms. King.
Bray Meyer?
Yes.
Albreney?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Bariak?
No.
Sletzer?
No.
Passes three to two.
Motion to appoint 2021 council representatives to boards and commissions.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, may I be recognized for a moment before you entertain a motion?
Yes.
Thank you. Um, members of council, you took 13 minutes to discuss what date to have a meeting on. Why am I pointing that out? When you get these boards and commissions, may I suggest, Mr. Chairman, you entertain a motion for slate, otherwise it would be twenty and a half an hour on every single board, and, uh, you really aren't going to be able efficiently to get your work done tonight. So just make a suggestion that when you start to entertain motions, uh, that you do it in the form of a slate, uh, so that, uh, we can have a debate that's fulsome regarding all the boards at once, instead of having, uh, the kind of, uh, argument about the shape of the table that we're devolving into.
All right, for us to do a, via slate, um, each item can still be discussed on that, correct?
Sure.
Okay, um, do we have somebody to make a motion to do this via slate, um, that way that we can discuss each item, but do it at a?
Some move, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, Ms. Bray Meyer, um, roll call.
Wait, wait, wait. Is there discussion?
Yeah, you, I mean, you can discuss on it. If, I mean, if you have something to weigh in, Ms. Sletzer.
Okay, I, I want to make sure I'm clear with what we're doing. If we're doing everything as a slate, are we just leaving the names where they were?
No, and that's, that's what I asked. Um, what we're going to do is each one together, that if you have planning and zoning, you can look, uh, Civil Service Park, you can, we can discuss them all at one time, where we don't have to make a separate motion in a separate roll for each and every one. We can ju, as a whole, discuss the, the big, the whole pie together.
Could I have, could I have the floor, Mayor?
Sure.
Would it, could, could we, would it make any sense, and I haven't thought this through because the slate thing hit me, would it make any sense to suspend, to make a motion to suspend council rules? I would like to talk about these, but, uh, uh, I, I don't, I have the old slate. Uh, what, what, are we still going to have to nominate them one by one?
No, I mean, you're, you're, uh, not sure on that. I mean, for us to vote, um, if, if you have a disagreement and vote on planning and zoning, how, how does that, uh, work, Mr. Fritz?
The procedure we've used before is, there's a list that you have already in front of you, I believe. We motion that that list is what we're going to discuss. Then, after you have a second, you suspend the rules, everybody talks about where they want to be, what, one they can't be on, et cetera, and then you change it, come back, make one general amendment, and pass the whole thing. That, is that clear enough, or is it still unclear?
I, I do have a question for the law director. Any, anything that we do takes four votes, right?
No.
Why not? We went through this last year and got a separate opinion from, uh, Mrs. Sobovich about the mayor being a member of council, and it takes four votes. Is it two-thirds or four-fifths? I'm not sure. Do you have that information, sir?
You're just passing, you're just passing a motion to appoint council representative boards. This is a majority vote.
Is it what?
It's a majority vote, sir.
It's a majority vote of total membership.
Of total membership of council, and the member, the mayor is a member of council, sir. We, we went through that with Mr. Waddell, and, and Ms. Sobovich ruled that he was a member of council. What's the matter, Joe? Do you have it in front of you, sir?
I don't have it in front of me.
I do. It's, um, 12103. Paragraph F, council committees, item number one. Council by motion at any regular or special meeting may establish standing committees by affirmative vote of the majority of council's total membership.
That's for establishing a committee, right? Not the membership of the committee.
Excuse me, Mr. Fritz, what did you say?
Isn't that for establishing a committee, not for?
No, it doesn't, no, it says it may establish standing committees by affirmative vote of the majority of council's total membership.
The committees are already established. This is just appointing a representative to those committees.
It's already on the agenda, so you don't need four votes. I, I don't, I'm confused because I don't, it doesn't make any sense. It's on the agenda, you can amend, everyone's aware of what it's going to be about. We're not creating another committee, we're just filling the seats of the committee. So it's a three to two vote.
Through, the, um, Mr. Fritz, the mayor is a member of council on this vote. How do you get a majority with three? How do you get a majority of three when he gets a right to vote? How do you get a majority with three?
The mayor doesn't vote on this.
Not a tie.
But he's a member of council.
He, he's never voted on this.
Generally voting case of a tie.
We went through this, Mr. Lynch. That's, we argued that.
We, we are not creating another committee, we're filling the seats. It's already on the agenda, so everyone had notice of it. It's a simple. It's a simple majority vote.
Chairman, there's a flo- motion on the floor that we do this by slate, it was seconded, could you please call the roll?
All right, before I call the roll, though, when, when do we waive the rules so that individuals can talk after the, uh, motion is made?
Yes, yes.
Right, roll call.
Alberini.
Yes.
Zimmerman.
Yes.
Bariak.
No.
Sletzer.
Yes.
Bray Meyer.
No.
Okay, we're, it's passed to do it by, by slate. Now, do we have a motion to waive council rules for the purpose of discussing the, uh, boards?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, Mr. Bariak, um, do we have a second? Wyatt?
I second.
Okay, Ms. Sletzer, any discussion before we do the roll? All right, uh, roll call.
Zimmerman.
Yes.
Bariak.
Yes.
Sletzer.
Yes.
Bray Meyer.
Yes.
Alberini.
Yes.
Okay, regular council rules are, are waived for the purpose of discussing the, uh, committees. All right, I don't know, want, want to just each individual look at their wish list, or, or, or...
Mr. Mayor, may I have the floor for a couple minutes to help you out, sir? If I could, okay. So we have a list in front of us, um, council representatives to commissions and boards. And, uh, we have planning, planning and zoning, civil service parks, recs, TIB, fire district, finance, et cetera, clear down to the bottom. So I don't know if we all take notes or whatever, but I'll just put in my thoughts here, uh, as far as planning and zoning goes. Um, I'm, I'm ha- I'm satisfied with, uh, if, if they want it, that is, I always want to make that option available to, to say yes or no. Uh, Bray Meyer and Zimmerman, Bray Meyer is a primary, uh, Zimmerman is the alternate. Uh, civil service, I'd like to respectfully just decline that, maybe, um, one of the other council members would take that one. Um, park and recs, um, maybe Tessa as a primary, uh, Adam is the, uh, secondary. Um, TIB, uh, myself, uh, and Adam. Uh, fire district board, um, Adam and, and Mr. Baric as the alternate.
What's that on, sir?
Finance and adminis- finance and administration, um, uh, finance committee, Alberini and Zimmerman. Um, utilities and public works, uh, maybe John and Tessa. Uh, public safety, myself and Zimmerman. Uh, East Gate Regional, uh, Mayor Klein and Tessa. Um, tax review board, um, maybe Sandy and A- uh, Adam. Uh, utilities, uh, utilities appeal board, uh, Barmex, Bariak's a primary. Maybe myself or Tessa's a secondary. Uh, local board of tax review, um, maybe myself and Adam. Uh, economic development, um, the mayor, uh, myself, Zimmerman, the finance director and city manager. And I think that is it.
Yeah, that's it.
Uh, I'd like to talk, say something.
Chair.
Look, I'm going to be very blunt. Mr. Alberini's been on it, on, um, all these economic development and finance for seven years. He's going, he's going to be leaving. We need new people on there. And, uh, I believe Mrs. Sletzer could do a wonderful job on finance, she has a master's degree in finance. I mean, a master's degree in, uh, in, uh, in, uh, uh, education and, and taught, taught, uh, taught school on it, which would make her more than well quali- qualified. And we've got to break this thing up where the same people have the same... It's not fair, it's not fair to the rest of us, and I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. Alberini, but you're going to be done at the end of the year. And it's time to put people on there that are going to be here for three, four years, and let, get them broke in. Uh, that's, that's my position right now, I'm not going to... Uh, I think the people can see what's being done here, it's manipulation and control. It's always what we want. I'm not going to buy it. I want to, I want to be, have some input on, I, I make a motion, I'd like to be, when we come back in a session, that Mrs., uh, Sletzer take over all Mr. Waddell's positions. And, uh, and also, I'm going to make a motion that I want the Law Director to give me a legal opinion on not having to have four votes. Because we went through this before. And that's why we always went in the back room and, and haggled it out, because if we couldn't get everybody on the same side, there was no sense in, uh, in bringing it forward, we compromised. It's not run everything down somebody's throat. I think the people in town are going to see what's going on here.
Um, but before we go any further, there's so much here to look at. I would throw out a suggestion, maybe that we consider having, because at the end of the month, when the judge weighs in and makes a final decision between Mr. Waddell and, um, Ms. Sletzer, that might be a thought of either keeping Mr. Waddell in the places he was, or having Ms. Sletzer take that, you know, that's, that's a thought, and then going forward with the rest of them. You know, that's a thought, one of you guys weigh in on that.
Mr. Chairman, may I be recognized for a brief question?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Law Director, um, if we were to come out of, um, suspended activity and go into regular session, um, is, do we lose anything by, um, having an executive session as part of the next council meeting? Uh, to have sort of a, as Mr. Bariak identified, hashing things out, uh, maybe an executive session at the next council, do we lose anything time-wise? And I direct that to you and also to Madam Clerk.
Well, I don't, there's, we never went in executive session on these before. I don't know what it's section, executive session would qualify, I don't think we're allowed to go into executive session on these matters.
Oh, okay, I just thought it was under the personnel area, because Councilman Bariak brought it up.
No.
Yeah, in, in reality, if you really think about it, you can't, you can't achieve anything in executive session because you can't vote, you can't, there's really...
I was just going by what Councilman Bariak had, had mentioned, he said that was the practice before.
Mr. Fr- Mr. Mayor, if I may ask a question to Mr. Fritz.
Sure.
Um, would, uh, what about an open work session on these matters, Joe?
Uh, we can, but we, you're supposed to have it done tonight. The charter says first meeting of the year is when you have your committees in place.
Look, I, I would like to have, I would like to have a chance to speak, please.
Go ahead, Ms. Sletzer.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I, I did listen to what Mr. Alberini was saying as he ran through the list. And, um, I did listen to him when he said that, you know, he's willing to give up civil service. And in that case, I would like to see Mr. Bariak take on that civil service position. And other than that, I agree with what you had to say. I'm fully capable of taking all of the committees and positions that Mr. Waddell had. And until we do get a final ruling from the judge on the 21st, it probably might be a good idea to keep me in there. And I'm, I'm more than willing to go with Miles. Committees and...
How do you guys feel about just looking at, finding where Mr. Waddell's at, and then just marking Waddell or Sletzer? I mean, it's almost like flipping a coin, I mean, what, and then going from there, I mean, that would, that would knock out about half of the work tonight.
Uh, Mayor, could I, uh, since we're not in a most, look, we need, we need to change the dynamics of this council. Mr. Alberini is going to be going. He's had seven years. Mr. Waddell, the people have spoken, uh, loud and clear. It's time to bring in some fresh ideas and some fresh perspective to all the committees. And I would say that Mrs. Sletzer is as qualified, even more qualified than myself, I don't have a master's degree. She's well qualified to handle this, and she's very astute at, uh, numbers. Uh, we can't have the same people and promise the people transparency and good, open government when the same people are on there all the time. It leaves doubt and innuendo and rumor. And we don't want that, we want, we want everybody to know, at least I do, that we're, we're transparent, we're, we're going to move forward, we're going to do the best for the people of this community. And not serve, and not serve, well, I want to do this again, I want to be on eight years, I want to be on nine years. It's...
A brief question, Mr. Chairman, on that issue.
Okay.
Thank you. Mr. Fritz, uh, it does require us to, something to be done at this meeting, but I think you always, uh, under all circumstances, have the, uh, have the right to table. Uh, can we table this until the next meeting, even if we can't go into executive session?
I looked at the charter a few minutes ago, I was able to look at it, and I guess it says we have to organize. If we now have a Vice President of Council, we probably could get away with not having it established till the next meeting. I don't, I don't know anybody's going to be, I don't know anybody can bring anything against us to force us to do it in, in advance. So there's probably minimal risk in, in having a table till the next meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to ask if you can request that one member of your body bring us out of exec- excuse me, bring us out of the suspension of the rules, and then enter mo- entertain a motion to table, which is not a debatable motion.
Yeah, all right, real quick, like, is, is council, is that, uh, is that okay with everybody?
Wait a minute, no, no, it is not. I, I, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Mayor. This is not the Law Director's meeting, this is not the city manager's meeting, this is council's meeting. We are tending to council positions. I think we've come up with something that's workable. We just take Waddell's name off and put Sletzer's name wherever Waddell was, and we live with that.
Okay, and, and that's why I asked, I wanted to see how, how council feels about what we do, if we...
I make a motion, Mr. Mayor, that we table this until next meeting, and we, we can all sit down together.
You have to come out of suspension first.
Yeah, right, right, right now, we're waived, uh, regular rules, so, um...
I make a motion, we come out and, and reenact the council rules.
Excuse me, um, is there a second on the motion?
I second it.
That's not a debatable motion, Mr. Chairman.
When we're, when we're, when we're, how do we make motions when we're not in session?
Mr. Chairman, it's not a debatable motion.
I made a motion to reinstate the rules, John.
Yeah, hold on a second, let's, uh, each person discuss for a second, so, I mean, we're, what were you saying, Mr. Bariak?
Mr. Chairman, it's not a debatable motion.
I'm saying, how do we make a motion when we're not in session? We've suspended council rules, how do we make, we have to come back in.
That's the, that is the, Mr. Baric, that's the method to go back on the rules.
That's, that's, that's the motion that, that they made was to waive, uh, to put the rules back in order and go back to regular rules.
And Mr. Lynch is correct, under the rules, Robert's rules, it's non-debatable, you just go right to a vote.
The only thing you can do is call the roll on this, Mr. Chairman.
Um, I understand that. Uh, roll call.
Bariak.
Yes.
Sletzer.
Yes.
Bray Meyer.
Yes.
Alberini.
Yes.
Zimmerman.
Yes.
Okay, um, we're back to regular rules.
I make a motion to table this.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Till when?
Till the next meeting.
Till the next meeting. Okay, that would be the 21st of January, correct?
Yes.
All right, any discussion, any discussion on that?
It's not a debatable motion, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, I would like to have, uh, on this motion to table it, though, I would like to have a written legal opinion, I'm asking it right now on floor, about why it doesn't take four votes, and I'll be researching this.
Mr. Mayor, can I say something real quick, please, with your permission?
This is not a debatable motion, your only alternative rule is to call the roll, you cannot do anything else.
All right, all right, okay.
Okay, it's, it's not to, it's not discuss, you can't discuss it just to...
That's correct, that's what a non-debatable motion is.
Okay. All right, roll call.
Sletzer.
What are we voting on?
Just to table this until the next meeting.
Okay, yes.
Bray Meyer.
Yes.
Alberini.
Yes.
Zimmerman.
Yes.
Bariak.
Yes.
Okay, the, um, this is being tabled until the meeting of the 21st. Um, next item of business, if Ms. King can, um, read.
Number four, a motion to appoint a parliamentarian.
So moved.
You have to pick a name, who?
Uh, I make a motion that we appoint, uh, current legal counsel, Joe Fritz, as our parliamentarian.
All right, do we have a second, Mr. Zimmerman?
Yes, sir, seconded.
Okay, is there any discussion on this?
Yes, I'd like to weigh in on this, I have a question. Why, when the, the Law Director has always been our, uh, telling us whether we can do, whether it's parliamentary, why do we need to put another layer of, on it? And it should be somebody neutral. I don't think we need it. Because if, even if we put somebody, which I would, I, I can't support Mr. Fritz, because he's already got the final say-so. He tells us what's legal and what's not legal. Uh, unless it would be somebody that would be licensed and nonpartial, and then we wouldn't have to listen to him, because if we didn't agree with it, we could ask for a final opinion off of Mr. Fritz. So I don't know, I don't know what this is all about.
I have a, I have a question on this, um... I don't know who, uh, uh, originally, uh, put this together, I'm wondering who it was, well, what's the benefit?
May I answer that, Mr. Mayor? If I could. Um, my prior experience as a township trustee, um, we, we basically followed, uh, Robert's Rules of Order religiously. We stayed on task, we stayed focused. Honestly, in our meetings here that we have in Newton Falls lately, um, we don't stay on task, we don't stay focused, we, we stray to the right, we stray to the left. So I think it's important, whether it's Mr. Fritz or anybody, to make sure that we follow the rules, just like we're playing basketball in the quarter, playing baseball, or playing football. And I think, uh, uh, in all of our discussions, they need reined in. Uh, they need to stay, uh, stay on task, as I said earlier, and move the meeting forward. Right now, these meetings just drag and drag and drag and drag and drag. And every point, uh, every point along the way, we're, we're in constant violation of Robert's Rules of Order, that's my opinion.
Okay, is there any other discussion?
Yes.
Mr. Bariak.
Robert's Rules of Order are not the rule of law to a council meeting. They are suggested, but we don't have to go exactly by Robert's Rules of Order on everything that we do as a council. I don't know why we would have to be, uh, limiting discussion or whatever, well, this doesn't say this and that. Robert's Rules of Order cannot be used as a tool to hinder city business. That is, I know that for a fact, it's in the ORC, or if not the ORC, excuse me, I'm a little bit, I'm a little bit taken back right now at this. So I don't, and I, and Mr. Alberini's point, we're not township trustees, we're city councilor.
One more address, Mr. Mayor, if I could, please. Um, uh, if, if someone wants a second, please do so before I respond. Or wants a first before I respond.
Ms. Sletzer, good.
Okay, um, I have, I was doing some research that I had put together from, you know, things that have gone on with, like, within like the past year and a half or so, and I found something that was written by the city manager on March 14th of 2019. At that time, he, he issued a list of general questions while he was requesting that second opinion from Ms. Sobkovich. And in, in that list of questions, um, he had something that I quoted, and I, I will read it. "The mayor is using Robert's Rules of Order as a method to squash or otherwise stifle opinions or business, not aligned with his political agenda. Disrupting the normal give and take of a business meeting by duly elected council members attempting to do the job they were elected to and took an oath to uphold."
Mr. Chairman, I didn't write that, please let the record be like that, I did not write that.
You did.
I did not write that. 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 And I'll say so under oath right now. I did not write that.
On March 14th, 2019, you wrote that.
I did not. I believe those remarks came from Councilman Bariak, and I was extending them onto, uh, Ms. Sobkovich. But I would never say that. And I didn't say that. That's just plain wrong.
Wow. Mr. Mayor, I would call the vote, please.
Okay, hold on. Just let me see if Mr. Zimmerman has an address or Ms. Bray Meyer.
Nope, I'm good, sir.
No, I'm good. Roll call.
Wait a minute, I didn't get a second, did I? No. Mr. Bariak, you want a second? Mr. Bariak. If anybody's going to be a parliamentarian, it should be somebody that's, it doesn't have anything, any interest or anything. It shouldn't be one of the staff, it shouldn't be the mayor. It should, it should be somebody that licensed and not just a $5 a month or something to, are, I'd like to ask the law director a question real quick. Are you a licensed parliamentarian, sir? Are you licensed? Mr. Fritz, are you a licensed parliamentarian?
Mr. Chairman, there's no licensing procedure in Ohio for parliamentarians. Mr. Chairman, there's no licensing by the state of Ohio for parliamentarians. It doesn't exist under law.
Okay.
Well, I'm, I'm, I'll tell you what, I, in, in my own view of weighing in on this, um, I kind of looked into this and got a, a response in this, because I wasn't real clear of what this even was. So I spoke to somebody that's the president of Ohio Association of Parliamentarians. It was told there's only six or eight of them in the entire state. And the fact of the matter is, and as Mr. Alberini had said, and I agreed, Robert's Rules of Order, it, what, the, the purpose of Robert's Rules of Order, um, not just as, as the mayor, do I study Robert's Rules of Order, I, but I was the president of the school board and as a pastor of a church, I used it in my meetings there too. I, I don't claim to be a genius on it, but I don't need to be a genius on it. The, the reason for even having Robert's Rules of Order, it's a tool. It's a tool to run a meeting where everybody gets their opportunity to speak and weigh in. And yeah, we go all over the place, but it is nothing to do with my ignorance of Robert's Rules of Order. It has to do with, we don't do things properly. When we find out this, we're constantly asking questions on why this is going on, why that's going on, and such. That's why. Um, it has nothing to do with, uh, individuals wanting to say, well, you know what? This is a council meeting. The mayor's the head of council. I'm the one that runs the meeting. You know, fact of the matter is, I, I coached basketball for a whole lot of years. I had some good parents help me out. I had some good assistant coaches help me out. But the fact of the matter is, I stayed the coach. I didn't have any of them to take my spot. And I was elected by my friends, my neighbors, and a lot of good people in this community. They elected me to be the mayor, and I'm not giving away my responsibilities to do so. The parliamentarian is here as an assistant to, to give assistance to the mayor. But the fact of the matter is, I don't have to, to, I, I can thank them or whatever and, and move on with my own. I'm more than capable of directing the, the, the meeting. I mean, vote how you want, but I'm more than capable.
Roll call.
Bray Meyer.
Yes.
Alberini.
Yes.
Zimmerman.
Yes.
Bariak.
No.
Fletcher.
No.
Okay, passes.
Um, a motion to appoint Timothy Williman to the Planning and Zoning Commission, beginning January 1, 2021, for a five-year term.
So move.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Uh, I, did he put in a resume?
Mr. Williman's been on the board already. He's served a five-year term. No one else has applied. He has asked to be reappointed.
Um, he has been on the board for these, all right. Well, and are we missing anybody on the board? Uh, could I ask that question, Mrs.?
That is the only opening on the Planning and Zoning Commission.
It's the only opening. Who's going to?
On that commission.
He's been, but he's been on there?
Yes. Yes, his term expired at the end of the year.
And he wants to be reappointed?
Yes.
All right. Okay, any, any other discussion? Any other discussion? All right, if not, roll call.
Alberini.
Yes.
Zimmerman.
Yes.
Bariak.
Yes.
Fletcher.
Yes.
Bray Meyer.
Yes.
Okay, passes.
Um, motion to schedule all special and emergency meetings will be sent by email to the city clerk and time stamped and then sent to the council and mayor as confirmation.
Okay, do we have a motion? I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Okay, discussion. Yeah, I, I'd like to address this first. To the other floor. Since I sponsored it. I understand about timestamping, but you can't timestamp a phone call. And emails would be less confusion. There would, nobody would say, well, I got mine in first, or you got yours in first. There would be less, uh, confusion and redundancy. And also, uh, I, I think that we, by, by, only by giving emails can we perfect, make it perfectly clear to the public, and it won't have anybody like weighing in on it like the citizens on. Why is this, that? Why didn't this? And, uh, I, I myself would like to know. There's been times in the past when, uh, I've called a motion and then they just say, well, everyone already had that in there. Well, I say, prove it. Just prove it. That's all you have to do is show me, show me the money. And I, and I would, you know, I, I wouldn't, uh, I'm not accusing anybody of anything, but it would sure take a lot of confusion and innuendo and, and divisiveness away from this council. Okay, any other discussion? Any other discussion on this before roll call?
Um, yes, I, I would like to weigh in on this one too, because when we had the, um, the emergency meeting on the 30th, you know, this is, this is where we tried to talk about that, but then we were told this is the wrong place to talk about it. So I think now is the right time that we should be allowed to talk about it. I know that we met on the 21st and coordinates 2020-41 was the one that did not pass by emergency. And then somehow, Mr. Alberini and Ms. Bray Meyer knew the next day that there was a new piece of legislation called 2020-42. On the 23rd, I called for a special meeting, a special meeting to be held on the 30th. I felt that I was being, you know, nice, giving a, a, a real big heads up a week earlier. And I know that Mr. Mr. Bariak and I both called for a special meeting on the 23rd to be held on the 30th at 6:00 PM, when most of our normal meetings are held. It still has never been explained to me how a day after a piece of legislation was defeated as an emergency became an emergency meeting item for an emergency meeting that was going to happen eight days later at 7:00 AM in the morning. How did that happen?
Okay, is that all you have, Ms. Fletcher?
Um, yes, I, I do think that we need to, we need to be submitting our requests via email. The email timestamped itself anyhow. Now, if, if it comes down to a point where they're going to be accepting phone calls, then those need to be documented with timestamps. I would like documented timestamps for phone calls. The emails, the emails timestamp themselves. So I think what we need to do is insist on timestamps for phone calls.
I'd, I'd like to make a motion to amend that, to include, uh, all phone calls be timestamped. Okay, do we, uh, do we have a, a second on, uh, the amended motion?
I will second it.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I think you need, you're changing the, uh, something that was already on the agenda. Uh, so I don't think you can move forward, right, unless you have a, for, you already had a motion to change the agenda from the beginning of the meeting.
Are you the law director, Mr. Lynch?
Excuse me.
Well, I understand. Let's hear from Joe.
Okay.
I agree with Mr. Lynch.
Well, you know what? We're in discussion. There, there's, you know, no matter what, it's, it's kind of common sense. We, we, we got to do better. I mean, just for us to call each other and say, this is what so-and-so, that's not the, the way to run a business, let alone a city. I mean, we're, we need to have some type of a specified, I mean, nobody wants, nobody's discussing it here. And it is true. I mean, we need to be accurate of when the meetings are, when they're called and such. And that's, you know, we're just kind of slipping between the cracks at times.
I just want to say real quick, Mr. Mayor, that we have rules in place to handle this. They've worked well up to this point. And there's probably always going to be some sort of hiccup somewhere along the way in anything that's done at any time, but we have the rules in effect. They work. They have worked and looks like they will continue to work. Um, and that's all I have to say.
Where do you?
Well, hold on, hold on a second. Everybody's talking one time. First off, you should always be wanting to do better. I mean, it's just like these Zoom meetings. We were told that, um, it's acceptable. Acceptable is the bottom of the barrel. You know, I, I, I'm glad that I, when I raise my kids, I don't say, well, this is the minimum. You can, you can get a D minus and still pass and go on to the next grade. That's acceptable. It's not acceptable. We need to raise our standards a little bit. And I, I had people calling me, people emailing me about that emergency meeting. You know, the evening before, and they're wondering when, when they're going to be able to get on Zoom and such. I have an answer for them. You know, um, because we had phone calls and we, we, you know, and that was it. Um, things haven't been working good. That's why we're, we're looking, we're adding positions here, we're adding parliamentarians and everything, because things aren't working well. You know, it, it's not working well. To ask and say, well, either, either have, um, it by email, or you can clearly see when somebody emails you, or I don't know if it's a text or, or what, where everybody sees, uh, online's, uh, when the meeting is, that's not much to ask. It really isn't. I, I don't know why this is a big deal, you know?
Hold on a second. Mr. Bariak.
My first.
All right, Ms. Bray Meyer, have your first.
Yes, I agree with, with Adam. Uh, I don't think we should be changing this at this time. Uh, that everything's worked okay, better than okay so far, and, uh, that's, I think that's a good idea.
Well, I mean, it's always a good idea if you're the one that was called, but if you're like Mr. Bariak that didn't receive the phone call, then it's not a good idea. That's like voting, what's for lunch? If a bunch of wolves raise their hand, the sheep ain't real happy, you know? Um, anybody else have anything?
Yes, I'd like a second. All right, Mr. Bariak. Look, this isn't about serving ourselves. This is about transparency. And you'd think Mr. Zimmerman and Mrs. Bray Meyer would want to make sure that there's nothing left in the dark or any kind of, uh, what I would call, uh, uh, unknown. They would want to say, hey, that's not a bad idea. Why don't we take, take the argument away and vote, and vote with the people? Now, something might be working good for you, Mr. Zimmerman, may not be working good for somebody else. If, we're not working for us, we're working for the public. Our, I want you to understand, I want the public to be involved in this more. I want the public not to think that we're doing something that maybe, you know, there's questionable, at least, at least to say it's questionable. I, I hope you would, uh, think about that, because you are a public official, sir. And we, I serve the people. I don't serve the council.
Mr. Mayor, just to be clear, what's on the table now, what's on the floor, is the motion to amend that Mr. Bariak had, to amend the motion that he had on the original motion. So we're, we're two steps into it.
I'll drop that. If it's going to take.
Roll, please.
Is it going to take four votes to pass that then, to amend it? Mr. Fritz, it won't take four votes if I amend it, will it?
Uh, y- your amendment is, uh, what was exactly your amendment, sir?
Motion was to amend all, to amend it to include all phone calls time, be time stamped.
That probably will not take four votes, because it's not a major change.
Thank you.
Just clarifying the.
Thank you, Joe. I, I realize it's not a major change. So that's, I would like to add that amendment right now for, put it to vote.
And you can vote on the amendment first.
Okay.
I'll second the amendment.
Okay.
Already seconded.
Yep.
Okay.
It's time to vote on the amendment.
Okay, roll call.
Zimmerman.
Yes.
Bariak.
Yes.
Fletcher.
Yes.
Bray Meyer.
No.
You're muted.
No, I'm sorry, no.
Okay, uh, amendment passes. Now, do we have a discussion on the amended, uh, motion? Is that?
You, you, yeah, you, now you have a discussion on the motion as amended.
Yes, okay. Is there any discussion on the motion that is amended, and the only difference is it's to, um, also, uh, include phone calls timestamped?
I'd like to be heard on that, Mr. Chairman, when you're ready.
Okay, you have the floor.
Thank you. Uh, members of council, there's been only one emergency meeting in the last two and a half years. This was it. So I hear this discussion, things aren't going right, and people don't think these are being done right. This is the only emergency meeting that's been called in two and a half years. I am not, I'm, I'm disinclined to the handcuffing as it relates to the way, uh, Ms. King, the law director, myself, handle things as the council staff as relates to timestamping phone calls. Um, uh, in two and a half years, we've had one emergency meeting. And, uh, as Councilman Zimmerman indicated, uh, you don't change the rules uh, to identify a way of dealing with something that only happens on an extremely rare basis. We can, I, I, you know, we, to, to timestamp every phone call, uh, that comes from members of council. We get phone calls, we get faxes, Councilman Bariak drops off pieces of paper, uh, we have all kinds of various methods of communication. And if you don't trust your staff to accurately tell you who called when or who submitted what when, then we're dealing with an entirely different kind of issue. And I urge, uh, the defeat of this motion as making it impossible for us to carry out our duties in a way that's consistent with efficient operations of the office.
All right, I want to. Mayor, I have something to say also. Uh, I just, I just had an opportunity to go back and scroll through the council rules. This would be a modification of the council rules. It will have to pass by at least a four votes. So everybody needs to be aware of that.
Sir.
Oh, you ask about the amendment to the motion, sir. That's different than the, the actual one. You can amend it with the three, you got to pass it with four.
Well.
First address, Mr. Mayor, if I could, please.
Okay, Mr. Bariak was, or Mr. Bariak, did you want an address or no? Uh, look, I'll tell you what. I, I, I disagree with the city manager, because whether it's done one or done 100, there's a record and a log and a paper trail. Now, all I can say is that you'll stand, every council member here will stand for his or her vote. The public will be the boss and the judge. So, that's, and it's not that much work. We have a full-time uh, clerk that, uh, we just.
John, I get 10 calls from you every day.
I, well, look, I, I wasn't told that there was a meeting that had already been scheduled by Mrs. Bray Meyer, Mr. It's, Mrs. Bray Meyer thinks everything's a joke. Mrs. Bremeyer thinks everything's a joke. It's not a joke. We're trying to get transparency and, and get this council united. We'll see who wants to unite it and who wants to divide it. That's all I'm gonna say.
Okay, Mr. Alberini, did you want it first?
No, I'm done, Mr. Mayor. Please call the votes, sir.
Hey, 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 I didn't get it first. How can you call the vote, Mr. Alberini, when I didn't even get a chance to have a turn?
Ms. Tessa, I'm sorry. I need a scorecard to treat, to, to, to keep track of everybody who talks. I'm sorry, okay? Sorry.
Ms. Blitzer, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Lynch, you're right. We've had one emergency meeting in two and a half years. Do you know how many special meetings we've had?
No.
Okay, well, there, there've been a few. There've been a few special meetings, and
I'm a council resident.
One of the ones that I happen to have paid a, you know, really close attention to is the one that, um, somehow you had a meeting on November 16th and said, oh, by the way, on November 18th, we're having a special meeting. Now, I, again, I go back to the research I did where the charter says you must give 72 hours notice. The codified ordinance says you can do it in 24 hours, but I didn't find 48 hours in there anywhere. So I, I, and I, again, I, I want to bring up the issue that, um, you know, I felt that I submitted my request for a special meeting on the 23rd of December with very timely, you know, notice. You know, and there was nothing wrong with having a special meeting where the public could have at least participated with public comments. At an emergency meeting, the public gets shut out. And I have to, I have to conclude, I'm sorry, concur with my fellow councilman, Mr. Bariak. You know, we all need to do this. We all need to be more transparent. There is nothing wrong with being transparent, and that's all we're asking for. I'm done.
Okay, anybody else? Anybody else? Okay, if not, roll call.
Bariak?
Yes.
Blitzer?
Yes.
Bremeyer?
No.
Alberini?
No.
Zimmerman?
No.
Okay, motion fails. Okay, um, public comments, um, open to, um, non-agenda items. State your name, your address, and you have three minutes.
Mr. Chairman, uh, the first person that had their hand up, if you'll give me a minute to bring the timer up, was, uh, Mr. Crop, and we are ready to go when you're ready to recognize him, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, hold on a second. Okay, Mr. Crop, uh, state your name, your address, um, unmute, and you have the floor.
I ju, I haven't started yet, and my timer's already started, so I've already lost some time. My name's Brian Crop, 247 Elizabeth Street, uh, right here in town. Um, this meeting, uh, is a perfect example of why the public should be allowed, why you should have in-person meetings, why people should be together. This meeting was a mess. I hope you guys understand how this looks to everybody else. Um, I hope you guys realize what this looks like to outside communities, to other towns, other villages, uh, just all around Turnbull County, all over Ohio. This is embarrassing. You guys look awful. I just want you to know how silly this looks and how terrible this meeting, this, this was just embarrassing, embarrassing. Senator's smiling right now. Ma'am, you were part of the reason that this meeting is so embarrassing. Just your behavior, it's, it's really, is it sad? I, I had a couple of things I wanted to touch on. I won't be able to get, could you please stop my time? Because she seems to cough every time somebody has something important to say, and she has nothing important to say. Trust, ladies and gentlemen, I'm gonna touch on trust because no one trusts most of you people up there. There's a reason why everybody wanted to have this, uh, the phone calls documented, uh, because we don't trust you guys. When somebody says, hey, uh, when did this happen? When did that happen? We get, well, I got a phone call. I received a phone call. No proof, no evidence, nothing specific, uh, nothing to support anything that they have to say. It's always, we just have to take their word on it. And unfortunately, uh, a lot of these people up here don't, they have checkered paths. Uh, they can't be trusted. They, they've proven time and time again that they're not to be trusted, not to be believed, and they've done that in their own lives. Um, and I, I'll, I'll speak personally to somebody that I spoke to. I spoke with my council member, um, just recently before the last, before the emergency meeting. And I actually, I, I talked to him on the phone, and he refused to represent me. He refused to answer basic questions, simple questions that I asked. There's a reason why people don't trust half you people or most of you people up there, because of your behavior, your actions. That's why you're not trusted, and that's why this is being requested, uh, by your fellow council members and by people in the public, and you guys don't care. We can see it. Your body language says everything about it, your responses, your attitude, just your, your demeanor, everything about the way you guys behave. It's completely inappropriate. Um, I wanted to, Mr. Fritz, you mentioned, you talked several times earlier in the meeting about, um, what people, motions and ordinances, legislation, that kind of stuff. So I would love if you would clarify for me how you yourself can, can set, uh, present an ordinance, uh, can Miss, can Mrs. King present an ordinance? Can Ms. Musson present an ordinance? Can she present a resolution? Can anybody on council staff just present ordinances and legislation? Because you guys aren't legislators. You're administrators. You're council staff. Dave is just the head administrator. That doesn't make him a legislator. That doesn't give him legislative authority. Doesn't give him a legislative ability whatsoever. Um, meetings are not verbatim. They're cathes shorthand. They're summaries. They are not actual dictation. Hire a, you guys want to spend city money, uh, hire a stenographer. Hire somebody that actually will, will track the meetings and keep things together. Um, gosh, I, I didn't even get to get through all the stuff I wanted to talk about, guys. There's just not enough time. Uh, I'm sure I'll see you guys again later.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Give me a minute to reset, please. Okay, I'm reset, Mr. Chairman. The next person that was in order was a caller that identifies himself as Donnie Placer. Mr. Placer, you have to unmute yourself in order to be able to address the council.
Okay, Mr. Placer wants you to unmute yourself. You have the floor. You have three minutes.
Yeah, good evening. Uh, I just want to make a comment about Ms. Bremeyer. Um, I think the council.
Hey, Mr. Mr. Placer, real quick, I think you have two different, different devices on, phone and, and maybe laptop or something like that. So you want to move one of them away, and then it'll be, it'll clear that up.
Move. Is that better?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, I just think the council, um, should be disgusted with themselves, first of all, for the defender. It is a total disgust of a newspaper that was circulated. We know who was responsible, and I can't believe that the council didn't want to take action on it. And they should be holding Ms. Bremeyer accountable with discipline for even sending a letter into the defender and admitting to it. She should be removed from office immediately. That is disgusting. If she had just a teaspoon of class is what all would take. And I cannot believe that she could sit there and admit she wrote that letter and submitted it, and council does nothing to discipline her. And she's proud of it. It has to do with ethics. She can say what she wants, but as a council member, she's held to higher ethics, and she should be held accountable.
Truth.
Thank you. That's all. Am I interrupted?
Mr. Chairman, the next person is a person by the name of Laura Beth. If you'll give me a minute to reset the clock, I'll be with you in just a minute. Uh, she has to unmute herself, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Laura, if you unmute yourself, give your name, your address, and you have three minutes.
Yes, my name is Lauren Anheisel, and I'm at 227 North Center. There's a couple of things I'd like to address. Um, first off is paper trails. A lesson I learned a long time ago is paper trails save your tails. And when you can't follow through and have a paper trail, things look sketchy. It looks sketchy. And if you're talking about phone calls, with my background, phone calls have two different types of logs. You really don't have to do much. You can literally screenshot your screen on your cell phone, or you can log into your account online, and online it will have all of your call records for the last 16 months. Or even the last month, and print them off and submit them once a month. Another thing, we had a motion for Mr. um, Fritz to become the parliamentarian. Can somebody explain to me what his position has changed? Because he kind of already was the parliamentarian. And honestly, Mayor Klein, you don't have to listen to any recommendation that he makes. He doesn't, you don't have to listen to anything. He is there just to give guidance, which ironically, he already was doing beforehand. And last note is, Ms. Bremeyer, if somebody else doesn't step up in the next week and a half to go for your recall, I will. Have a good night.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There are no other hands, and that completes the public comments, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, that brings us to, um, closing comments, and we'll, um, start off with, uh, Mr. Alberini. Uh, Mr. Alberini, do you have anything to, uh, in closing comments?
Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, um, Mr. Zimmerman?
Nothing to say, sir.
Okay, Mr. Bariak?
Yes.
Okay.
I mean no disrespect to the council. I mean, me, mean no disrespect to the staff. But openness and transparency, and what we've done before is good enough. And we want to do it, keep doing it the same way. Well, why do you want to keep doing it the same way? If I didn't have something that was benefiting me, I would want to change it, and if I had something that was going my way, I sure wouldn't want to change it. Now, the public's gonna speak, and I think that the people are gonna, whatever it is, they've spoke once, they're gonna speak again. I just want to, I, all I want to do is what's good for the people. We represent the people. The people don't represent, in other words, we serve the people. They don't serve us. And I think that we've got this convoluted, and I would like, now, I'd like to make something else. I wasn't able to make the, uh, meeting the 16th because of my, I didn't have internet. We tried to run over there. I wasn't allowed to be on. I think that this Scott Street sewer project is way, way, way out of line. Even with a, from what I'm able to ascertain, we got a grant for 850 or 875. There's gonna be a, maybe a OPWC loan that we might, uh, be able to, uh, uh, have to pay back, but some, this is a $3.3 million project. Where's the other $2 million coming from? And for how many people is it gonna benefit? And did the township get, have their residents weigh in on this? How come we haven't had any meetings? What are we, what are we doing here? What are we doing here? I, I, I would like to, next meeting I will probably put something on. If we postpone any type of, until we have public meetings by the township, have the commissioners, oh, oh, and one other thing I'd like to say. Mr. Smith, Randy Smith, is no longer, has anything to do with the sewer septic of this county. He's just the engineer. And Mr. Danny Polivka, one of the other friends of the river, was, uh, disseeded. So I would like to have the new commissioners weigh in on this, see what they're gonna propose, what they want to do to help us before we go ahead and step out on a limb and have it break off on us. Be, before, when this whole thing came down, there was a, we had two big grants, I think it was 100, 1,400,000, and we've got another, uh, 400 and some thousand dollars that, from, as a gift. And still, there was so much bickering over the tap-in, and they wanted $30 a head for every person in the household. And then, and then there was bulk meters, and we couldn't afford to do this, and why charge them less than we were gonna charge? And if I can remember right, and I don't want to point fingers, but the council didn't want to weigh in on it. They didn't want to buy it. It was dead. Now, all I'm trying to say is that I think, before something else is shotgun through here, that we take a good look at this. We have some meetings, and we go from there. Uh, I wondered, I'm sorry, I didn't wish everybody a, uh, Happy New Year. I, I'm looking for better things to come this year. I want to wish everybody a new year, a Happy New Year belated, and, uh, I'm honored and privileged to serve you. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Blitzer?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Um, I, I would like to go back to what I had to obviously address in my opening report. You know, I reported that I sent stuff to the administrative staff, and I got no reply. I've gotten nothing back from them, you know? I mean, all I'm trying to do is do the best that I know how to do. You know, I haven't been at this for years. Obviously, I'm fairly new. You know, I would appreciate a little bit of assistance from the city manager, the law director, the city clerk. He has been helpful. I would appreciate a little bit more assistance. And I, I want to make sure that Mr. Fritz knows, I don't appreciate the, the comment that you gave me about the elephants walking down the road during the emergency meeting. Okay, those, those types of comments are uncalled for. And I would, I will point out one more time, this is a council meeting. This is not a city manager meeting. This is not a law director meeting. This is council's meeting. I'm gonna leave it at that.
Thank God.
Ms. Bremeyer, do you have something?
No, I don't.
Uh, Mr. Fritz?
Nothing, sir.
Okay, Mr. Lynch?
Yes, very briefly, uh, members of council, um, not sure why it's not coming up. Uh, can anybody see what I've got on camera here? Okay, let me get that. Let me reduce that. Everybody see the screen that I put on camera there?
I can vaguely, barely.
Okay, this is an email dated March 21st, 2019, and I'll read it to you. Dear Ms. Sapkovic, attached, please find the letter given to me on March 20th, 2019, by Councilman Bariak for a second opinion on various municipal matters. And then below, you can see, is a document, which I'll blow up. It's a letter dated March 14th, which was given to me on March 20th. That letter was typed, prepared, written by, authored by Councilman Bariak. That's what you read from Councilwoman Blitzer. I did not make those remarks. They were made by Councilman Bariak, and you can ask him right now if he wrote that, and he'll tell you that he did, because he personally handed it to me. I have no further comments or reports, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, yeah, I'm just gonna be brief. I didn't prepare anything but just observations that I had from tonight's meeting. And, um, again, um, our, our council meeting is a, a zoo tonight. Uh, I hope everybody had their popcorn, basically. And the fact of the matter is, I didn't, uh, cause it. Um, the fact of the matter is, I'm not the one that closed the meeting off. I mean, Mr. Lynch, you closed the building off. The governor did not. Um, we have a First Amendment right to, to meet. We have individuals talking out of turn and, and everything else that, that goes on, and individuals blame me for it, say we need to, to add a position. I didn't cause this. You know what? What am I supposed to do up in my room when I have council people, um, saying things clear in their throats every time someone wants to talk and everything else? Yeah, it's a circus. But, but so what do we do? We go and say, we want to, now all of a sudden, put a parliamentarian on here, and I, and I checked into a parliamentarian. You got Mr. Fritz is the parliamentarian, Mr. Fritz is the law director. There's really no difference. He was the law director before, and we would ask him to weigh in on a situation. But the fact of the matter is, I don't know if somebody thinks they want to, uh, undermine the, the authority that, that the mayor does have, and I'm not some egomaniac. But I, I, I tell you what, I was, I was elected to do a, a job, you know? Thanks for the clearing your throat right now as I speak, but you know what? I'm gonna talk.
I'm sorry, Mayor, excuse me.
I'm gonna talk.
I have a problem with my throat, sir. I have a problem with my throat, sir.
Tell me what I want.
Answer, and I have a hard time.
The fact of the matter is, this week was, my father was on his deathbed. I, I spoke to him, and I said to him one thing, that all I wanted my entire life was to make him proud. You know, and I think most sons uh, feel that way or are driven by that. And the fact of the matter is, one of his last words was that he was proud of me for doing the right thing. And I'm gonna continue to. You know, individuals could come up with this or whatever, and yes, Mr. Fritz is the parliamentarian, he is the law director, but you know what? I still continue to be the mayor, I'm the head of council. This will be my meeting, and we can have you weigh in on something, but I still have the, the, the final say-so, I, I run the meeting. And um, and I'm not gonna stop at that stance, you know, because it's, it's a fact. And that's all I have. Um, do we have somebody to make a motion to adjourn this meeting?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Okay, Ms. Sputzer, um, roll call.
Sputzer?
Yes.
Bremeyer?
Yes.
Alberini?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Barak?
Yes. Okay, meeting adjourned.